As quickly as we can, we just know that when Dustin comes through, we might be shuffling around a little bit. With that, the first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. And before starting, are there any items? I'll ask Noel if anything's changed on the agenda for the meeting or Eric. Okay, Noel, then I asked for a motion to approve the September 9, 2014 agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes, aye, motion carried. That takes us to item two, which is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. That was our regular meeting on August 5, 2014, and motion on our board packet. We get that motion on the table.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting about this 5, 2014.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried. That then takes us to the financial report.
This is Anderson with staff. This is the end of the year, or the first month of the year budget performance report for 2014 for July, which would put us about 8.33 percent of the year. Our revenue's at about 6 percent, our expenses at about 11 percent. A lot of that is because some of the expenses are insurance things that all come out at one bulk at times. So overall, we're in pretty good shape as the year goes.
Great. Any questions? If you bear with me, I think this is one we do approve. Okay, ask for a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried. That takes us, the next item on our agenda then is oral presentations for anything that's not on the agenda. And so hopefully there are copies of the agenda that are the front there. Is there anybody that would like to address the commission on an item that's not up for, not on the agenda, not up for vote tonight? If there is, please come forward. We do have one. If you could just come forward and state your name and your address.
My name is Pat Burke. I live at 130 Spanish Circle. And I was wondering, on the internet, we have a message from most of the people in here. Have the agenda posted beforehand, so you could look at it? And could we, are the minutes available on the internet, or just like a council minute? Could get them posted too?
Gotcha. I'll turn it over to maybe Noel, Anderson, or Exer. Just real quick, from what I've seen, I don't know on the minutes if they can be put up for the last meeting until they're approved. So it's, there's kind of a chicken or the egg conundrum there. If we post them before they're approved, or if we wait till they're, they'd always be, I guess, two months behind, really. But for the agenda, it generally comes up on Fridays before the meeting, and so I think that's...
This is Schrader with staff. And we have not put the P and Z packet on the website, the public website. We can look at doing that. It's kind of just the logistics of...
Oh, okay.
Staff person that kind of have that capabilities. We've just posted a link that we then email out to commission members and, you know, the tech review members. But we can look at doing that, yeah. On minutes, if we're posting minutes that are having yet been approved, we'd have to discuss whether we'd want to do that, or possibly could mark them as draft or something.
Draft or something like that, yeah. That'd be fine. Noel, that's a very good point. I, you know, I think it's happened in the past is an email will go out with a link to where you can download the packet. But just from experience, usually the pictures are in color, and it might be, this is 104 pages. It takes an awfully long time to get it to download, but we can put that up. And maybe put it up where the agenda, you can link on that, and it's much quicker, it comes up much quicker. Or the actual whole packet can be there too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a follow-up question on that. We've, I mean, this has been a point of discussion, I think, at a couple of different meetings. Are there plans in place to put the full agenda on the site monthly? I mean, do the staff, I guess, where is that at, in terms of making a determination if we're going to do that stuff?
I guess we'll have to make sure we've got the personnel that can have that, to have authorization to access and edit the city's website. That's, there's not very many individuals, so making sure the logistics of how that work, we haven't worked all that out yet. But it is definitely something that would be beneficial, so we would like to look at doing.
That's a very good question, and thank you, sir, for bringing it up. Well, any further questions or discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. It's the first item for action on our agenda. And this is Exhibit A1 in our board packet. And we'll start out kind of by going through the procedural matters. This is a, let's see. The time right now is 4:06 PM, and a hearing is scheduled for this. It's Item A1 on our agenda. It's a request by St. Andrews Presbyterian Church to rezone property from the R2, 1 and 2 family residence district, to CP Plan Commercial District, to allow for future development of the property located at 1926 Sager Avenue. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August 29, 2014." Can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
Some.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I, this is me, I'll be abstaining on this item.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
One abstention.
With one abstention. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried, with one abstention noted. Okay, so again, this is, it's Item A1 in our board packet, and it begins on Letter A1. Or, I'm sorry, on Page 1 in our board packet. And we'll start with the staff report, I think, now. And then we'll go to, if there are comments from the audience.
This is Graham with staff. The applicant's proposing to rezone the property, which currently has a church on it, to CP Plan Commercial District, which would allow for better marketability of the property. The request to rezone the property would not appear to have a negative effect on the area as long as the new use of the property was adequately screened from the existing residential uses to the east and south. The area is comprised of mainly single-family residential uses, which are found in the south and east. And there is an existing religious facility located to the west, and a medical facility located to the north. Now, the request could have an impact on traffic in the area, depending on what the new use of the property becomes. The property was used for a church, which did have minimal traffic every day except Sundays. Sager Avenue is classified as a local street, and Green Hill Road to the west is classified as a minor arterial. The zoning ordinance would require screening from the residential properties to the east if this rezoning was approved. This property is located within Sewer Service Area 16, which is a known problem area within the city. The city would require that no heavy sewer user be located on this property. There is a 7,279 square foot church that's been on that 3.15 acre property since 1960. There's also a 240 square foot garage on it, and a paved parking lot to the east and north of the building, which is in need of repair. Due to very low attendance rates, the church has recently closed, and the property is currently for sale. The property is zoned R2, 1 and 2 family residence district, which would only allow for a church or a one or two family dwelling if the property is sold to a new owner. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property to CP Plan Commercial District, which would give them greater flexibility in marketing the property for sale, including uses such as professional office uses, and some commercial uses if deemed appropriate for the area. The applicants are pointing to the fact that the adjacent properties to the west and north are zoned C2 Commercial District, so adding this property to a similar designation would appear to be compatible. The surrounding area does have a mix of uses, as noted earlier, including the religious facility to the west, and medical facility to the north, and then single-family residential uses to the east and to the south. A short distance away to the north is University Avenue, which is a main commercial corridor, and Green Hill Road, which serves as a minor arterial, is located just to the west. Directly to the east of the property are single-family homes, so if the rezoning is approved, screening would be required per the zoning ordinance, based on the fact that the property most likely wouldn't be significantly altered other than updating the exterior look and the parking lot. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. At this time, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R2 to CP, based on the following reasons. One, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Two, the request would allow for more options for the reuse of the property as it's currently listed for sale, and then subject to the following conditions. One, that an effective visual screen, including a six-foot solid fence and landscaping, is erected along any boarding residentially zoned property. Two, if final site plan meet all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. Three, that the property be limited to allow any uses in the R4 multiple-family residential district, except for the following uses. One, multi-family dwellings. Two, rehabilitation houses. Three, group homes. And four, tourist homes. And four, that the property be limited to allow the following uses in the C1 Commercial District. Bookstore 1. Two, a collection office. Three, dance studio. Four, financial institution. Five, post office substation. Six, photo studio. Or seven, tailor shop. Questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions for the staff at this time?
Yeah, this is Thornsberry. I have a question on number four. The, it's interesting, the five or six that you've listed there, tailor shop and dress shop and things. What about the medical dental office, other professional offices? Are they excluded because you list these specifically?
Yes, a dental office would be allowed in the R3 district, so that would be allowed.
It would be.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
R4.
Right. Yeah, the R4, the R4 district is the multi-family residence district, but it also allows for professional offices. So a majority of those professional offices will be allowed, except for the following, the four on number three. So the multi-family dwellings, which is allowed in the R4, and then the group home rehab home, those are allowed in the R4, but what staff is saying is we don't want to see those uses there.
Excellent.
But other professional offices are covered under the R4 district.
Okay, one more question. The Service Area 16 to the water, are we going to do something to get ahead of that issue? And when we zone a new place, are there different requirements so that we don't, we're not exasperating the problem with the water issues?
This is Anderson with staff. The city's undertaking actually a number of different projects to try and do that. There's a slip lining project. They're working on an ordinance to disconnect the sanitary sewer lines from the footing tiles. There's also some other larger major improvements throughout the city to try and deal with this with the EPA and the DNR. So hopefully, and areas 15 and 16 are obviously two of the priority areas. So we are taking some measures to try and alleviate this, going in the future. It just isn't going to happen overnight.
And just to follow up, Jared, the same question I think that you did on, either look at three and four as to what's being excluded and what's being allowed. Just for everybody in the audience, there are, the items that Shane listed, that would be the conditions that would be placed on this. One, the six-foot solid visual screen fencing and landscaping. But two, it allows for R4, which is generally residential, except for residential properties. So it allows those other things that are in. And then you just added some, the seven that were listed, like bookstore from C1. So it's kind of a, it allows for a range of uses on the property CP, but it's still a limited range as well. Any further questions for staff? Okay, would anybody in the audience like to address this topic? If so, please, please come forward and just state your name and your address.
Sharon Anderson, 1200 Scott Avenue. And I am here in opposition to rezoning the property. And I have the signatures of 95 of my neighbors who are also opposed to the rezoning. May I present the signatures?
Sure, please.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can you, can you give us some idea of what exactly your opposition is based on?
On the potential for the traffic problems in the neighborhood, and the sewage issues, the problems with the water.
Do you want to see the church just sitting up here?
We'd like to see another church go in there, and buy it.
Just in.
Yeah, no, sorry. But we get a lot of young, some people, and they were, you know, we don't want, they have a lot of kids, you know? We want no more traffic. We got enough everywhere now. Like I said, the water is going to take the most. So we don't want to see that stuff. The truth be nice, we want to buy it. That's it.
Anyone else in the audience would like to speak for or against this request? Please.
I'm Fred McGee, and I am with the Slumy Officials Commercial Group. Thanks for your time this afternoon. Our group is marketing this property for sale. We represent St. Andrews Presbyterian Church and the Presbyterian. And it'd be our primary goal, trying to make churches, for, for this property, it's the best use for it. It's the easiest use for it. It's priced, so another church could come in, but we can't make a church out of nothing. So we're, we're working to try and find, whether it's a startup group that would want to, to begin their, their new church life here. But short of that, if we are unsuccessful in finding that user, we want to be able to represent the property, find something that would be appropriate to fit there. And we're with the city, we're with the neighbors too. The, I'm sure that the church wants to see a good use for this, and that wouldn't be an inappropriate use, highly dense, multi-family type units, apartments. But there would be some appropriate uses, whether it be a medical type use, or there would be a fitness facility that has limited hours. The type of user is going to be sensitive to where it's located. If it's not on Green Hill, it's on Sager. And so I think its location is going to limit it to a real broad commercial use. And therefore, we know that we're going to be back here in front. If we have a change of views, if we find a prospect that wants to use it, and we develop or readapt the property, and it isn't a good fit with the current zoning, we're going to be back here. And we're going to try, at that point, we'll work to try and get some ownership with the neighbors here, make sure that it's a win-win for everybody. But your, your point is, rather than, if we work through the, the possible prospects that are churches, and we're unsuccessful, we don't want to see a vacant property. And the neighbors don't want to see that, although they like the green area. Ultimately, it's not good for the neighborhood, or good for, for the church. So that's what the goal is, and it'd be our objective to, to be sensitive to the neighbors and find a good use.
Thank you. Looks like we've got one more.
Forest Bill, Honeycomb Road. I live south of this property. This is one of the worst areas of Waterloo. They spoke to it when they talked about the rezone for stormwater, sanitary sewer. There's a lot of basement flooding and things like this. And I know that they always say we're going to put in a pond to hold it, but when we get a six-inch rain in a couple hours, that doesn't do any good when your basement's full. Or when it's running into the windows of your basement, which is happening to live on, up there on Downing. There's one person that, he runs right into the basement.
Thank you.
Hey, I got a question.
Yeah, please come up to the microphone.
No, I just want to know if you can turn that up a little bit. We're having a hard time hearing back.
Oh, okay.
This is Schrader with staff. They're still working on the audio components of this room, and unfortunately, that microphone is not nearly as good as these. Anyone that does get up and speak, if you can try and get as close to that microphone as possible, it will help. But hopefully, that problem will be alleviated in the future, but right now, we don't have real good audio like that.
If you can't hear us as we're going through, just raise your hand, and then we'll try to repeat it. Although I don't want to yell too much from here, because I think our microphones are fine. So a lot of we talk, it's going to be really loud up here. But if you can't hear us, we'll try, we'll figure something out, so everybody can participate. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this rezon request? Okay, hearing none. And I guess, I guess before we get the motion on the floor, I did have one question. This is for the rezone, not for approving a site plan? Correct on the property. It's really to, I think, to market it. I just want to point that out, that it's, it sounds like this is designed to allow for the marketing of the property, but a plan would still have to come back, and with the conditions as listed, it would talk about any final site plan would have to meet all city code regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, probably most important for everybody, drainage as well. But the parking also is important here, I'm sure, for traffic and sidewalks. But with that, I recommend a motion.
So moved.
Sorry, I'd take a motion, excuse me, to approve this. Oh, I'm sorry, close the hearing. Again, this is not my normal deal. Okay. Get moved and seconded?
Second.
Second. All those in favor to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried. Now I think we can go to action on the motion. Okay, we'll get the motion on the table and then go from there.
I just, this is tactic, I just want to say to address the lady's concern on that. I think that's part of the reason why they are putting in, in commercial CP and putting this limitation, because I believe it would limit the amount of, you know, traffic employees, and then hopefully dress that. And I think it's try to find a middle ground. Because I can appreciate you wanting to keep it, the traffic low and sewer. And looking at these typically require a very limited amount of employees for these. So I think that, I believe that might have been the reason for the rezoning, is to kind of help find that middle ground. So that's not vacant, but they can get that moved, so that if we can't find another church to come in, this would limit the amount of traffic, so it would be close to what has been there. If I understood that correct? Is that correct? Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Was that a motion?
Oh, no, I just, just a comment before we made the motion.
We'd like to get a motion on the table. The staff recommendation is for approval, but it's up to the commission then.
This is Morrison. I make a motion that we approve with the limitations and recommendations the staff placed.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to approve the rezone request, subject to the conditions as noted. They're items one through four on our board packet. Any further discussion among commission members? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried, with one abstention.
I'll just note for the, the people in attendance, so this would then go to the city council. We haven't obviously yet calculated up the petition. If the petition had 20% opposition of the people living within 250 feet of the site, it would then take six out of seven, or a supermajority of council members, to approve the rezoning. And again, we'll, we'll have that calculated up probably sometime tomorrow, but getting this petition today, we don't know that yet. But it'll move ahead to council, probably in about three weeks.
All right, thank you. And the next item on our agenda then is, it's Exhibit A2, and it begins on page 10 of our board packet. And this is a, let me see, this is another public hearing. So we'll get this public hearing open, then we'll close, and then we'll take action on it. The time is now 4:24 PM, and a hearing is scheduled. This is a request by Daniel Fensel for a site plan amendment to the R2 CZ 1 and 2 family residence conditional zoning district to allow for the construction of a new office building and parking lot located at 1209 Dundee Avenue. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, aerial photo, and site plan was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August 29, 2014." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file, please?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried. At this time, we'll hear the staff report from Chris Western.
This is Western with staff. The applicant is proposing the site plan amendment to the R2 CZ 1 and 2 family residence conditional zoning district to allow for the construction of a new 26 by 76-foot office building and parking lot. The request would not, would not appear to have a negative impact on the area, as there are mostly commercial businesses surrounding the area. To the north is Kern Plumbing, Zone R2 CZ, conditional zoning. To the south, there are some single-family homes, Zone R2, 1 and 2 family residence district. To the east, there are single-family homes, Zone R2, 1 and 2 family residence district. And directly to the west, there is Burger King, Zone C2 Commercial District. Current business has access from Dundee Avenue, which connects to University Avenue. There are no sidewalks in the area. The property in question is Zone R2 CZ 1 and 2 family residence, residence conditional zoning district, and has been zoned as such since December 12, 1994. The applicant was granted the conditional zoning in 1994 to convert an existing home into a commercial business. The property directly to the north is also a converted home that now houses Kern Plumbing. Properties to the northeast are single-family homes. The property to the northwest is Zone C2 Commercial District, that housed the former Wonder Bread Outlet Store. Properties to the south and east are Zone R2, 1 and 2 family residence district, are primarily single-family homes. Meeting to the west, the property is all zoned C2 and C2 CZ, which includes Burger King, which has been located there since 1988. As far as utilities, all of the utilities necessary for this redevelopment are available. There is a six-inch water main that runs along the west side of Dundee Avenue. The future line use map does designate this as low-density residential. The site is located within the primary growth area, as shown on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. Staff feels that the request, although not residential, is an appropriate use, as it is along University Avenue, its principal arterial road. The use has existed with no issues since 1994, and has been an asset to the area. Therefore, staff recommends the request for site plan amendment in the R2 CZ 1 and 2 family residence conditional zoning district be approved for the following reasons. The request would continue to be of positive use in the area, and it's subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, floodplain regulations, et cetera.
Any questions for staff? Any questions at this time? Hearing done. Thank you, Chris. So at this time, we'd ask for anybody that would like to speak for or against this request, please step forward and state your name and your address. Any questions?
Just a quick one. Forest Bill, I own a property on Evergreen, just across the alley from this. This is one of the best businesses, and cleanest in Walke up, that we have in the city of Waterloo. If everybody did that, we'd have a wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Please feel free to come forward.
What can we move to close the hearing?
Okay, seeing none. Okay. So it's moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes, aye, motion carried. The public hearing is closed. Now we can act on this request.
I had a quick question for staff. Is there any elevations that would be provided, or do you know what the look of the, of the building's going to be?
Western with staff. Western with staff, we do not have any site elevations at this time. That'll be part of the site plan review process. And also to note, the applicant does apologize for not being able to be here. He called this morning, he's in Minneapolis, was not able to make it, and didn't have really any employees that could come and speak on this, so he does apologize.
Great, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion of this.
This is Thornsterry. I make, I move that we approve the request for Daniel Fensel for the site plan amendment to the R2 CZ one and two family residence to allow the construction of a new office building at 1209 Dundee Avenue.
With the, could put the condition as noted here then?
That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, and floodplain regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes out motion carried. That takes us on to our third, four hearings on rezon and site plans amendments. This again is number A3, it begins on page 17 of our board packet. And the time right now is 4:31 PM, and a hearing is scheduled. This is a request by Hawkeye, Hawkeye Capital Investments LLC to amend the condition of zoning on the property's Zone R3 Multiple Residence District, prohibiting three-story tall multifamily residential dwellings along the west side of the property to instead allow for the construction of five three-story tall multifamily residential dwellings, generally located on the property north of Green Hill Road and east of Progress Avenue. This is a former Tunis Speedway. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating that, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August 29th, 2014." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file, please?
So moved.
Thank you, seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes out motion carried. Now we'll hear from the staff report.
This is Mary with staff. The request would be for the amendment of a condition that was approved along with the rezon of the property in question on April 21st, 2004, to allow for three-story buildings.
Get here.
Try to.
Closer. I'm just short, that's okay. I'll start over. This request would be for the amendment of the condition that was approved along with the rezon of the property in question on April 21st, 2004, to allow for three-story buildings with 12 units each instead of the 15 unit two-story buildings that would otherwise be constructed. The request would have, could have a negative impact on the area, and the applicant initially agreed to two-story buildings along the westerly side of the property to allow for further privacy and lessen the impact on the single family homes to the west. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. And the site is Zoned R3 Multiple Residence, Multiple Family Residence District, and has been since April 21st, 2004, when it was rezoned from R2 and C2. The requests would require a fence along the westerly property line to act as a buffer to the single family dwellings, and the site plan is showing three proposed detention basins. Larger basins are shown in the southeast and the southwest corners of the property in question, and the smaller detention basin is shown in the center of the complex. The property in question is not located within the floodplain as indicated by Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate maps. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the condition that was set by the April, by the April 21st, 2004 city council approval of the rezon prohibiting three-story multifamily dwellings to be constructed along the westerly property line adjacent to single family dwellings. Five buildings are being proposed to be constructed along the westerly portion of the property. Concerns expressed at the initial 2004 rezon by the neighbors entailed increased traffic onto Green Hill Road, noise, the capability of the current sanitary sewer system to handle the increased flow, stormwater runoff, scurrying along the westerly border, and lower property values. To address the concerns of the neighbors, the request was approved with the following conditions, a traffic study being completed, fence along the westerly side of the property, stormwater management, management plan, sanitary sewer plan, and no buildings over two stories along the westerly side. The applicant is now coming before the commission requesting to allow the construction of the three-story buildings along the westerly side of the property adjacent to the single family dwellings. Other conditions that were set at the April of 2014, that were set in April of 2014 appear to have been met by the applicant. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to amend the condition of the zoning on the property's Zoned R3 Multiple Family Residence, Multiple Residence District, prohibiting three-story tall multifamily residential dwellings along the west side of the property to allow for the construction of five three-story tall multifamily residential dwellings be denied for the following reasons. The conditions that were initially set by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council upon concerns expressed by neighbors and staff is not aware of any input from neighbors and indicating they're no longer concerned with the height, with the height limitations. And secondly, allowing three-story 12 complexes along the westerly portion of the property could cause unnecessary hardship for the single family homes that are adjacent to the property. And I would like to know that I have received numerous calls on the request, basically expressing the same concerns that were set in 2004 with the drainage especially, especially now that construction has started, drainage is a major issue. There's a lot of questions or concerns with traffic, the sewer system being able to keep up. And they have indicated that they have already had issues with flooding in that area due to recent rains. So I just told them I would pass that message along.
Thank you, any questions for staff at this time?
Oh, I got a question. You mentioned a request would be, require a fence, but what kind of fence are we talking about? Are we talking about a equi-stable structure fence? Or are we talking about a wire fence, what kind of fence?
It would be a solid fence that would act as a buffer in between the single family dwellings and the buildings, at least six feet.
This is Tackett, did the applicant state a reason as to why they want to have that amended to three stories instead of two?
Um, no. I think the applicant might be here.
Is anyone here from Hawkeye Capital Investments? Okay. And I guess at this time, yeah, we'll just, right after this, then we'll, we'll open it up to comments and questions from the. No, yeah, yeah, yes. Please be good, just state your name and who you're with.
Mark Mahor with Platinum Development, Marion, Iowa. A reason we're coming before you now to change from the 15 complexes to 12 complexes is market changes. 15 complexes were a single tenant unit, or excuse me, a single bedroom unit, whereas the 12 complexes are moving to a two-bedroom unit. It appears the market is more in line for the two-bedroom units as single units.
Hi, Tackett, again, I have a question. What is the difference between going to two-story or three-story? Can they still do two-bedroom units on two-story developments?
That would be a complete redesign of the building, bringing it back then into changing the footprint. The way we're looking at the site plan now is we're not adding buildings, even though we're diminishing units or tenants for that matter. What we're doing is we're keeping where the 15 complexes we're going to build and put 12 places there. So we've got a smaller, compact building, three stories high, as opposed to a longer building of 15. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I understand it coming from my, my concern is we've had issues before with three-story buildings not being compatible within a single family home area, and that's why I asked if it's possible to. To me, I understand from a business point, you're probably thinking, trying to get the most bang for your buck and put everything, get as many people in. But if we could, I think that's the big thing, is making it aesthetically, you know, compatible for the area. So I was wondering if it was going from one bedroom to two bedroom, if that was still possible. I understand you'll probably have to use a little bit more square footage per unit, but I wondered if that was something they had looked into, should this not pass?
We've looked into a bunch of different options. One of them with the 12 complexes is more of a compact building as opposed to the 15 flex being stretched out. It seems like it's more conducive to the neighborhood, even though the height is there. They're a different look completely, the two different buildings.
My next question is, if we're looking at condensing rather than extending, what will you do for the property that would have had that extended building?
It's green space at that point. So as I said earlier, there's 25 buildings proposed on the site. Some of them were 15 complexes, some of them were 12 complexes. They're still looking at 25 buildings on the site. So we've compacted from the 15s down. We started at 354 units, so now we're reducing it to 300 units, which should address some of the sewer needs and the traffic needs, some of the noise, things like this, because now we're converting what was normally going to be a concrete footprint down to green space.
Just so I'm clear on everyone, because what we're looking at, the change was basically you're looking at the marketability and what the market trends are, and you felt this would be a better way to go. Just so that I'm clear on the why we were going.
That and the nice, it's completely decided, it's all one building then. It's only going to be one 12 place there, but different views. We have three different pictures of what the buildings are going to look like, or renderings. So we're changing siding colors, we're changing the stone that's going to go on the front of these buildings. And then this is going to be different also from the garage spaces. Garages are going to be a different color altogether. What we're not trying to do is trying to give you a quick and cut look, so everything looks the same situation on it. And what we're also proposing then is instead of 200, I think it's 255 garages, we're trying to get it to 300 so that we can get more, more vehicles undercover. So we don't have as many vehicles on the site, so it doesn't look like a parking lot. Looks more like a residential area.
Do you have pictures of what the original approved buildings look like? Just to kind of give a comparison.
This is, the 12 flex is one of the original approved ones. And I, I, am I able to hook my computer up?
I just wanted to see the 15, because that would have been a two-story, correct? Because what we looked at was a three-story, I just want to see a comparison of that.
We're trying to get that up here now. Because right now, the requ, it's a zoning restriction or the rezon from 2004. It's just on the westerly line of this spot. So it's the five buildings that we're looking at that are closest to the houses on Progress Avenue?
The five buildings are the ones that are in obstition.
Gotcha, yep.
When we originally came, that was, intent was, we had more 15 complexes on the site, and you can kind of see it in the shadow.
Yeah.
And they're even on the entire site. But what we're proposing is to switch everything to the 12 flex building. The shadow shows the footprint of what the 15 would have been in the 12 flexes.
Okay.
I don't know how good it is to you, but I have a memory of the 15 flex.
No, you spelled it wrong to the.
So you can see, you can see the difference in the building size in 15 and 12. We're trying to compact it down, and then we're broadening green space.
Okay.
This is Thornsterry, I have a question for you. The new ones are two-bedroom units?
Yes, the 12 flexes are two-bedroom units.
And the 15?
They were one-bedroom units.
Thank you.
Tell me what you, what you're, excuse me, tell me what this, you're showing us, this was the two-story.
That was the original two-story 15 flex unit. That's what was proposed here originally.
Just along the westerly property line or throughout the entire park?
The actual proposal had maybe 12 of them on site.
12 out of 25?
Right. The opposition at this point is on the westerly ones, which we would like to switch, but our intention is to switch the rest of them anyway. So it's all one 12 flex on the site.
And that's, that's allowed under the current zoning, correct?
Yes.
The others that are not.
I believe so, we only had conditions on the western side.
Gotcha, okay.
The progressive side. And then the ones we're showing in the picture now, the flooded ones, were going to be just parking stalls. But now we're putting them on the top.
Okay.
So we've increased our parking, I think it's 48 garages as opposed to 48 stalls. And these, these units coming in here will all be market rate units. No low-income housing on this site.
Okay.
So I have another question. This is Thornsterry. I noticed that the proposed detention ponds are there. And now when you have more green space, is there potential for more runoff if your land isn't managed properly?
I have to let my engineer answer that.
Okay. Because it might be need of larger detention ponds.
Any further questions for the applicant right now? I'm not sure if you could just stick around, just to raise there any other questions. At this time, we'd open up to anybody in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this. Please step forward, just state your name and your address.
My name is Barb Schaefer. We live at 831 Progress Avenue, and I've talked to some of these people on staff. And our concern is, is the fact that there's so many units. Is the sewer actually going to take care of everything? This sewer is going over to Alabar, did you realize that? Yes, it is. And, and how many ponds actually are there? I think you had a great question. Is there going to be another holding pond? Because the water already has come over to our site, on the west side, to our houses, over the top. They hadn't put a berm or the plastic wrap like they do on most building sites to start with. And then they did that, but only because we had called to ask them why. I mean, this is a building site, they built other places. Why are they doing it that way? It's, it's kind of scary for us because we've lived there 47 years and never had that type of problem. And already down there on Green Hill and Progress, it's come into their backyard because of this. Also, I don't know if you realize, but with this, there is a creek, a small creek, behind this property on, on the west side. And because of how they flush their hydrants without any, any protection, all this silt has come into the creek area. So I mean, that's kind of scary for us too, because this silt is now draining into the sewer, which goes under Green Hill, which goes down to Alabar. So I would pray that you do check and keep note on making this into a 28, a three-story apartments on the, on the west side. Thank you.
I'm Dwayne Schaefer. And what I have to say is I'm parking in automobiles and how many people per acre? I mean, you're looking at 12 apartment units to deal. If you figured it all up, on 28 acres, you got 32 people per acre. Plus, you're going to have 300 parking garages. And whoever else is in there, you're going to have another 300 cars probably, which would be 600, going in and out of this property, causing traffic problems. And I also was going to talk about the sewer, but she got that from me, basically. And the way it looks to me, like Alabar Hills is going to take it, like you guys were saying before. And this is going to have to be looked into, and I really don't like a three-story apartment behind us, you know, because you got people on the third floor going to be looking down their windows. We'll have the shades and stuff like that up. So anyhow, I do have some questions for them. Are they going to have elevators in these for like handicap people or what? No?
No, there's handicap accessibility on the first floor of all units.
And just to repeat that, the question was that, will there be elevators? And the answer was no, that they'll be handicap accessible on the first floor units.
First floor only. Would you like me up there?
Sure, I think we're okay now, we'll bring it back.
How do you fill these and how are you going to pay for them if you don't? How do you fill these and how are you going to pay for them if you don't get the people in there for that many units? That's nine hundred people, the three persons to a apartment.
Yes, sir. Sir, if you could just address the commission.
But I was trying to talk, but anyway, you've got three people to an apartment. That's nine hundred people in that one area, which is the size of a small town. And my gosh, you know, I, I don't understand all the rigmarole, what they want to do with what's happening here.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of got lost in my notes.
Okay, nope, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Sherry Barnes. I live at nine thirty-five Progress Avenue. And I do have some pictures here if you would like to look at them. Behind my property, there is a creek. And since they've been doing construction, they trashed it to the creek. And my section of the creek, I'm sorry. My section of the creek is filled in with clay mud, sticks, branches, trees knocked over. I have been living there for twenty years, and we've always had to maintain that creek. I did call the city on it, but I had no help. So I am here of the creek overflowing. And when it starts in my yard, it's going to go all the way down to Kelly's yard. So, and then I am concerned of water coming off the construction site, the runoffs and everything. And I am concerned about our sewers in our area. So I'm also concerned about traffic. We live on a very busy street. And there, we have bus stops, bus stops on our street. And to increase that traffic is going to be a nightmare. Thank God, no kids have been harmed yet. But even just the first day of school, people run the stop sign. So, and then how are we supposed to get out of our driveways when we have traffic constantly coming around the corner and everything? So people that live up on Seagull, it's a dead end. And they are very concerned about getting out onto Progress. When Cedar Heights was being worked on, people used our road. And we were backed up for at least two to three blocks with the traffic. So traffic's going to be in that there. And then also, my concern is the value of our properties. For some reason, in our area, our value went down. But when you talk to everyone else, their value went up. And I would just like to know why. Is it because of what's going on behind us? So there is a lot of concern. I wish more people could have come tonight, but when you have a meeting at four o'clock, people don't get off until five, five-thirty. So I have recommended a lot of people to call, and I'm sure they are, so, thank you. Oh, the pictures will just show you the mess behind my property.
Got it, okay.
This, I have a question for you. Is that three-story building that's on the east side that's been built, is that correct? You took the picture?
Oh, well, it's kind of in the middle. I mean, there's an office and then there's a building. But like on our, our site, I'm really against the three-story. You know, what about our privacy? A lot of us have been living there for a long time. We pay our property taxes and that. You know, please, listen to your people, please.
Bruce Hadfield, I live at nine twelve Progress Avenue. When this thing started about two thousand and four, there was a lot of talk about runoff. With the, as they've started digging this property, they found that there is natural springs in this property. So they got water issues already, this moving down into this ditch area that they're talking about. My biggest concern is two things is if six hundred cars are going to come off onto Green Hill Road, that's going to be a real issue where they've got the entrance and exit also. If it's going to go back the other direction, it's going to go into the back end of Hobby Lobby, which all that traffic's got to come back onto Progress. So that, that traffic study that they had before, I don't believe it was done correctly. Second of all, I'm concerned about people staring in my backyard. Three stories up, I can't put a tree, I can't make, make things especially in one time to keep my privacy. So I have a problem with three stories. Two stories would be okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Please come forward.
My name is Pierre Marion. I live at nine thirty Progress. And I have some questions and concerns as well. I echo everybody else's. But I am concerned about the three-story. I am concerned about privacy part. I also have concerns about, this was explained to, to us as happening in three separate stages. And I'm concerned or have questions about, are these stages going to be completed to a point? You know, the first stage, will it be completed to a point that will have the finished grade done? Or will all the ponds be in? Or will all the ponds come in the grading and the landscaping? Will that all be done at the third stage, at the end of the third stage? Because if that's the case, there's a potential for a lot of runoff, a lot of mistakes to happen. Sediment with dirt that's not, not held down by any, you know, matting or green matter grass. They, they have done a lot of work there that I saw without a whole lot of silt fencing on that west side. Up by the road it was there, we could see it, but back behind Sherry's house it was not. So those are a couple of concerns I have. And I echo Bruce's statements there a lot about the cars and the property, you know, the moving on that road. And I also am concerned about pedestrian traffic, not, not just vehicle traffic. I'm also concerned about pedestrian traffic that might be on there. There's no sidewalks, no progress. Is that something that might be in the plan to build city-wise? Does the city have any plans on adding those later that might be brought up? That's all I have.
Great, thank you. And we noted those, we'll get through those, those questions here.
My name is Steve Nowers. I live at nine one nine Progress Avenue. I'm basically, the same thing as everybody else has said, but I do want to voice it. My main concern is the privacy. Two-story buildings will probably not be that big of a deal. You put three stories and they are going to be looking directly down into our backyard. They're talking about a fence that I would imagine probably eight feet tall is the max you could go on that. That's going to do nothing for a three-story building. The traffic, you've got, let's say, a potential of six hundred different cars in this, in this area. Progress as it is now is a major thoroughway between Green Hill and University. And there's a lot of traffic to go through there. And I would say, you know, my own guess, probably fifty percent of them do not follow the speed limits. And then you add three hundred more cars that, you, they're going to have an access going up north towards University. But that's such a congested area anyway. Most people are going to be coming down the south side. And they're going to be following up Progress to get up to University. They're not going to want to wind through all that. That said, my main thing is the privacy though. They're going to be right on top of us.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir, if you could, yeah, just step forward.
I do have one other question I'd like to ask. And are these dwellings going to have dumpsters in front of them or around them? Or will the trash be picked up more conventionally like it does in our residence?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jamie Fox. I live at eight thirty-nine Progress. My concern is the privacy. In two thousand and four, when they first talked to, when they had us in and first talked to us, that was one of the main issues that was that creek. They were going to leave a grave down through that creek, which they already did, get right into creek. And that's a natural creek. You're right, Dave, that's where our property is driven into is that creek. And if you look at this map, they're going to build right next to it. They're taking all the trees out. They've already dug in the creek, which is wrong. And they took in two thousand and four, when we first started talking about this, it was brought up that they would build two-story buildings and back to the, and back to the properties.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, anybody else? If not, then what we may do is I'll just have the, if the applicant could come back. We just had three real quick questions to answer, and then we'll kind of move forward. We want to strike that balance between, we know you all took time off of work to be here and have questions and get those answered, but then also kind of keep the meeting moving forward. So I thought this was best, the three questions I had, and if any other commission members have, please ask. There was a question about stages, I guess of.
It's built in phases.
Okay.
So the first phase has seven buildings going up.
Got it.
Depending on the opposition to the twelve plexes, the two to the western side.
Okay.
If we would, we wouldn't come and do the whole thing. The infrastructure starts on the south and works north, so that's the way we would be constructing the project.
Got it, okay.
So to verify, the first phase would be completed including the grade landscaping?
Correct.
Okay.
And just a side note, the city engineers, correct me if I'm wrong, but the stormwater policies would have, or ordinances would require that they maintain it even if, so say the grass isn't fully grown, they still can't have water draining off on the other property even if it's not a complete and finished stuff.
I think that was the second question. I had a.
And to kind of interject a little bit.
Yeah.
This is a work in progress. So we understand there may be some hiccups with it right now, but the engineering phase has it so that that's going to flow correctly, that we shouldn't be having issues in the, in the backyards of these people's residences. It should be working the way the system was, was engineered to be.
Got it. The only other question that I had on there was on the, I think the trash, dumpsters and the, it would be dumpsters or be the standard?
I was just talking with the engineer on that, because we really haven't put anything in place. What we're, we're probably going to be looking at some corrals.
Okay.
What we've done in Cedar Rapids area is made kind of a concrete bunker with gates on the front of this thing. So for the most part, it's hidden from sight other than six foot high. So six foot high is, and it won't have a cap on it. So it's going to have gates to it where the, the refuse companies can come in, pick up the dumpster and put it, garbage in, put it back and close the gates and run again.
Okay.
This is Tack, I do have a question. Sidewalks, is that a condition that, given the amount of people that we're looking at, sidewalks in the plans?
On.
Any sidewalks?
Greenhill side or?
Yeah, and, and this kind of leads into another question that, there was talk about traffic. And I, I think with this request, it's just about the two and three-story. It sounds like the property is already zoned and the traffic plan is already there. All that may be going back to two thousand and four. But the traffic just goes north and south. Either it looks like Tunis.
Correct.
Road to the north, which would go into that Hobby Lobby area they talked about. Or to the south, where you'd go right onto the Green Hill.
Right, we're not feeding east and west.
Yeah, it's Green Hill property, not the access road, but yeah, okay.
Right. And, and the traffic study was, I believe, was conducted by City Waterman.
Okay.
And I don't think there were any traffic issues.
In the request to change the height restriction, would not change the layout of the traffic for the sidewalk?
In my mind, it would reduce the amount of traffic. You have three hundred and fifty-four units down to three hundred. I'm assuming, but again, that's not my field. And there would be sidewalks, I believe, building to building. I don't think there are any on the, the Green Hill side. I mean, there's already a sidewalk in place on the Green Hill side.
Okay, the trail?
The trail, yeah.
Just a clarification, just a comment, just made someone clear. You said it would reduce the amount of people, but aren't we looking at increasing the amount with the three-story? Because if you're doing two bedrooms, given the proximity to you and I and stuff, aren't we looking at almost four individuals? I mean, we're looking at a main bedroom plus a secondary bedroom.
What our research is showing us is more families. We're quite a distance from you and I. So what we're seeing is maybe a mother and father with the second bedroom being children.
But not necessarily. I'm just, I'm just saying theoretically.
With the one-bedroom though, what we're seeing is a boyfriend, girlfriend, husband, wife, whatever relationship may be. So you're usually seeing two vehicles per one-bedroom at the three hundred and fifty-four, or two vehicles for the two-bedroom at the three hundred units. So I'm looking at maybe six hundred vehicles with our plan as opposed to over seven hundred with the fifteen plexes in place.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, but my math adds up a little differently. I'm just thinking, because I live in, down the street.
Sure.
In a three-level, three-plex. And I can tell you a lot of those times are tough. Some people, especially they'll, they'll come together, so you're talking about more vehicles. You know, they're a teenage driver and you've got just more people in the building versus a one-bedroom. One, that could be retirement, that could be just a couple. Generally, families, like you said, they will want something a little bit bigger. But I'm thinking you are still dealing with more people, more use, more water, more everything in general. That's what we're looking at.
In general.
Right, okay.
You could be, yeah.
Okay.
As a straighter of staff, I would just make sure you're calculating the decrease of fifty-four units in that two. I mean, it's going to go from one-bedroom to two-bedroom units, but it's going to go from the three fifty-four to the three hundred. So a decrease of fifty-four units with the proposed.
True. I got it. Well, as I'm thinking about it, not to get too far into the weeds here, but we can still have the twelve plex, two-bedroom units in twenty out of the twenty-five buildings, correct? As it stands now?
From my understanding, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The only ones in question are the ones on the western side.
Are these five on the western side?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but again, like I said, you, you could see the footprint is completely different.
Correct, yeah.
Now I'm looking at, not necessarily a tall building, but I'm looking at a longer building on this site, which I guess in my mind, my, my opinion doesn't matter at that point.
I, no, I understand, I understand.
And, and I wanted to address the privacy issue a little bit here. What we have on the western side is trees that are thirty to forty foot tall at this particular point. And I have a video here also, if you have capabilities of showing that. I was standing in front of, which would be the second building or the one down from the dotted line. There's a manhole right outside of there. I was standing on that and I filmed across the, the western border. And you're hard pressed to see a home in there. The density of the trees is a pretty good buffer. The, the fence that somebody's talking about, they're really not going to do any good because of the vegetation that's down there already. And our plan is not to remove any of that. That's a natural buffer, so we would leave all that in place. I shouldn't say all of it, there may be some that may have to go a little bit.
Any further questions for the applicant? If not, we'll try to wrap this up. Looks like we've got one more comment. We'll go with that and then, and then move on to staff discussion.
But they are not spruces, they're not pines. They lose their leaves in one time. You see right all the way through.
Great, okay, thank you.
Just comments.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks to both of you. What we'll do is kind of start the staff discussion now.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yeah, and we'll get that.
You're going to ask it back here or up here?
You can come on up, we'll just make it quick.
My question, my question, I'm Barb Schaefer. My question is, who, whose property are these trees considered to be on? That's what I, we know what the care is. Because right now, within having been bought and purchased, those trees have never been taken care of. Our yard is so covered with trees that it has mold in it. So I would like to know whose trees they are and who will be taken care of. And they have already taken trees down toward Green Hill. I want you to know that anyhow. So, but, you know, I just want you to keep it at the two-story level, please.
Got it, thank you.
Sherry Barnes, I have pictures of all the trees that they've taken down and how bare it is behind us. So if you would like to look at them.
Thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And then we can kind of start the discussion and really get to the, the heart of the matter on this.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Second. Moved and and seconded, and we can start discussion. Oh, excuse me, thank you. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair votes a motion carried. And just to get kind of get the discussion started, the the recommendation from the staff was that this. It's really to request to amend the condition, the zoning condition that was put in place ten years ago regarding just the five buildings that are on the west side along Progress Avenue. The request of staff was that, again, it be denied. And so with that, everybody that's here, thank you for being here and talking. Thank you to the applicant for being here and answering our questions. Some of the questions, though, they got to things like the, I guess, the things beyond the size of the buildings going to two or three stories. In some ways, I don't know if those are really up for vote right now, because we're just talking about removing the restriction between the second story and third story. So I'm not saying that to be insensitive to what the concerns are on runoff in traffic and sidewalks and those sorts of things. But I just don't know that we have that in front of us with the request. And again, the the recommendation was denial except for the planning and zoning commission, and then this goes on to the city council. But again, it's just for these five buildings that are to the to the west. Any discussion among the commission members?
I guess my feeling is if I was in these people's place, I wouldn't want a three-story building resurrected in my backyard. And I don't think it's fair. You know, they bought their houses where they did for a reason, and that was because they had privacy and they had the ability to use their property and however they wanted to do it, as long as it was lawful. And now with this new development, it's a change of the game. And it was known ten years ago that two-story was what the city bought was in the best interest of the neighborhood. And I think that it needs to stay that way. So I would recommend that that we deny this petition for change.
This is Thornsberry. Have that as a motion?
Is that a motion?
Yes. Second.
Second, okay, moved and seconded, and further discussion?
Yes, I was just gonna say I support what you're saying, Carol, and I am really alarmed as a Soil and Water Commission, what's going on here. And I would hope that hearing this, the city engineer would be out there tomorrow to find out what what compromises happened with that creek. And given all the sewer issues that we're having in the area anyway.
I would agree with that, especially when here there's natural springs they've discovered, and I think it's upsetting the the balance of things. And I agree, one of the reasons why I know we have zoning and we have R-one, R-two, C-one, C-two, so that there's a gradual distance between homeownership and commercial. And I would agree, I think having those buildings that close is not an abrupt change. I think if we're gonna have the three, it's fair to go from one to two to three for that issue, so I would agree with that. Do you need a second?
Any, yeah, we've got a motion and a second, just any further discussion among the commission members? I guess.
So an aye vote?
And an aye vote is to deny, and again, this is just, in all my calattas as well, and I agree, I think it's been stated very well that it it seems like this was a good buffer that was put in in two thousand four. To go from one-story residential, single-family residential on Progress Avenue, and two-story for just these five buildings that are to the west, and then this the three-story that are approved on the rest of the property. So again, an aye vote is to deny the request to amend the condition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes a motion carried. So what that means is that basically it's the status quo, that there's nothing else that's added, but the the zoning that's there and allowing for the two-story building on the west is still there as construction moves forward. So it's up to the applicant, I guess technically this could be appealed to city council, but it would require a supermajority of the of the applicant, again, just on this height restriction. But thank you all for being here, thank you for the applicant for being here and answering questions, and thank you all for coming out.
Do you know when it went to the city council?
No, I I think it's up to the applicant whether they want to bring it before the city council or not. And so if it is, it'll be in the public notices, but I don't know when, probably three to four weeks, it sounds like if they, that's brought forward. The next item on our agenda is exhibit A four. And this is a request by Valentine Enterprises for a site plan amendment for a salvage yard. It's also the first of three special permits that we have in B one. And so what I'm thinking is we'll go through this, start the hearing for the site plan amendment, but the site plan amendment looks like and the special permit are similar. So I'm wondering for time if we can, with the staff report, we'll do that. But first, we'll start off with the the hearing on the site plan amendment. And it is now five sixteen P M. and a hearing is scheduled at this time. It is a request by Valentine Enterprises LLC for a site plan amendment to the M-two-P Planned Industrial District to allow for the establishment of a salvage yard located at seven twenty-nine West Airline Highway. At this time, we should receive and place and file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "Aye, Patty McGee. Do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photos was mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on August twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen." Could we have a motion received and placed this notice on file?
Send it.
Thank you. Seconded and seconded, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes a motion carried. And again, this is on the site plan amendment, but also the special permit as well, there's similar staff reports. So now we'll hear from Chris Weston with his staff report.
This is Weston's staff. Impact on the neighborhood and surrounding uses. If the property conditioned and operated, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the proposed use is surrounded by agriculturally-zoned land to the north and east and industrially-zoned land to the south and west. Although there are several residences to the northwest along Airline Highway and to the south along Avon and Ashland Avenue. And a petition of opposition has been submitted, signed by approximately thirty-one area residents. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. There are no recreational trails within the nearby vicinity, and currently there are no plans to extend recreational trails to this area. The property in question is currently zoned M-two-P Planned Industrial District, except for a small portion near the southwest corner of the property that is zoned M-one Light Industrial District. The property was rezoned to its current zoning in nineteen eighty-one. Surrounding uses to the north is A-one Agricultural with residential homes and agricultural land. To the east, there is A-one Agricultural land that is actively farmed. To the south, there will be a three-hundred-foot area with a buffer area within the property in question, zoned M-two-P Planned Heavy Industrial District. Land further to the south is zoned R-two, one- and two-family residence district and A-one Agricultural District. To the west, A-one Agricultural with residential uses along Airline Highway and M-one Light Industrial District, including an industrial park located along Daniel Drive. The surrounding residential uses were built predominantly in the nineteen fifties and sixties, but go as far back as nineteen thirty-eight. The commercial and industrial uses were primarily built in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties. As far as the buffers required or required, an eight-foot solid fence must be constructed around the salvage yard with appropriate clampings. The proposed use would be required to meet all city drainage regulations associated with the salvage yard. The property is not located within a special floodplain hazard area as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's Flood Insurance Rate Map dated July eleventh, two thousand eleven. There is an eight-foot or eight-inch sanitary sewer line along Airline Highway. Stormwater is drained using a ditch that runs along Airline Highway. A twelve-inch water line runs from the south side of Airline Highway, which should be adequate to serve the proposed use. The future land use map designates a portion of this site as industrial, and the request would appear to be compatible with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Site is located within the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. Plan districts such as the M-two-P Planned Industrial District require that any changes to the use or proposed site plan of the site go through site plan amendment approval process, including approval of the city council after a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This request was tabled at the December thirteen, two thousand thirteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting due to concerns from the neighbors to the south and a lack of information. The original site plan did not fully explain whether the house was included in the request, as staff had concerns that there would be outside storage surrounding the dwelling at seven twenty-nine Airline Highway, and that there would need to be additional hard surfacing for the use. Also, the site plan did not show adequate fencing and a clear understanding of its location, did not show adequate fire protection and access to fire hydrants, and insufficient detail was provided regarding how a salvage yard would be operated from the site. The applicant has since met with staff on several occasions, as well as with concerned property owners to the south of the site, and has since submitted a revised site plan to better explain the proposed use. The revised site plan shows the site being developed in phases. The first phase includes the northern section of the site with the dimensions of approximately seven hundred and seventy feet by five hundred feet, plus the approximate one hundred sixty-six by three hundred area behind the house around the existing office shop building. The site plan shows a eight-foot solid metal fence running completely around proposed yards with notes that the southern limit of the operation fence may move as the operation expands. From the initial phase, there would be approximately a distance of thirteen hundred feet to the most southerly bound boundary line. To address concerns by the homeowners to the south, the applicant has revised a site plan that shows a three-hundred-foot buffer from the most southerly property line that will not be utilized as a salvage yard at any time. The site plan shows new fencing to be built in phases as land develops to the south, as well as landscaping between the fence and the property line to help screen the use. The plan shows the house with proper separation from the salvage yard and new hard-surface vehicular uses. Use areas. The plan shows a fire hydrant located in the northwest corner of the property in front of the house. However, the fire marshal has indicated that fire hydrants must be located so that all areas of the yard can be serviced within four hundred feet. Staff is aware that there is significant neighborhood opposition to the request. However, the site is zoned industrially and is shown on the future land use map for industrial uses. And with adequate conditions to safeguard the surrounding properties, staff does not believe that the proposed use would have a significant impact on the surrounding properties, including limited limiting the approval to exclude the south thirteen hundred feet at this time. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment in the M-two-P Planned Industrial District to allow a portion of the property to be used for the establishment of a salvage yard generally located at seven twenty-nine West Airline Highway be approved for the following reasons. Number one, the use would appear to fit in with the other industrial uses found in the area. Number two, the request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies this area as industrial. Number three, the request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And subject to the following conditions. Number one, the site plan amendment approval shall not include the area around the existing dwelling at seven twenty-nine Airline Highway, and no junk or salvage materials shall be kept in or around said dwelling to a point extending twenty feet behind the dwelling. And the approval shall not include the south thirteen hundred feet of the property in question, and that any future phases proposed to expand into the south thirteen hundred feet shall be required to go back through a site plan amendment process at that time. Number two, that all fencing around the salvage recycling area be a eight-foot solid material with an earth-ton color, brown or dark green, with the fencing along the property, zone A-one Agricultural District being set back a minimum of eight feet. And within this eight-foot setback, a minimum of two-inch caliper under-story tree shall be planted and maintained with a maximum separation between trees of fifty feet. Number three, that a private fire hydrant or fire hydrants be located on the property and connected to the water main in West Airline Highway per the requirements of the fire marshal. Number four, that any crushing of vehicles or salvage materials shall be only shall only be done by hydraulic crusher. Number five, that no stacking of vehicles or materials shall be permitted above the height of the fence. Number six, no vehicles, parts, equipment, salvage materials shall be stored outside the fence portion at any time, overnight, early morning, et cetera. If the owner feels if the owner feels necessary for customer transactions, they shall provide a space within the fenced-in area, potentially through the design of a double fence system, to have customers pull salvage vehicles or material directly behind the fenced area for discussion, sale, or drop-off purposes. Number seven, all areas for the vehicular use uses outside of the fenced area shall be hard-surfaced, and an area within the fenced area also shall be hard-surfaced to eliminate mud and dust from being tracked outside of the fenced area. And number eight, that the final site plan meets all code city codes and regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, drainage, landscaping, et cetera. I'm just gonna read the staff analysis for the special permits at this time. The zoning ordinance requires that all that any salvage site in the yard obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is due to the potential impact that this type of use can have on an area. The request was tabled at the December thirteen, two thousand thirteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there due to concerns, as we stated earlier. The zoning ordinance requires that recycling, junk, or salvage yards may only be permitted through special permit approval process in the M-one, M-two, or M-two-P Industrial District. That and requires that, number one, the yard be completely surrounded by a eight-foot fence. Number two, no off-premise advertising shall be on the fence. Number three, post rails or supporting elements of the fence shall be shall face the inside of the yard. Number four, all work performed shall be carried on within the fenced area or within an enclosed building or structure. And number five, contaminating fluids such as gasoline, oil, and grease are prohibited from being discharged onto the ground. So therefore, staff recommends that the request for a special permit in the M-two-P Planned Industrial District to allow a portion of the property to be used for the establishment of a salvage yard generally located at seven twenty-nine West Airline Highway be approved for the following reasons. Pretty much the same conditions, so I'm gonna skip those. Any questions for staff?
Mrs. Morrison, I have a question. The eight restrictions is the largest list of restrictions I've ever seen you give anyone. What is the enforcement tool? Once construction is started and planning and zoning has no more control, how are these gonna be enforced and by who?
Well, all salvage yards are inspected yearly. There's a team of people that go out, includes planning and zoning department, the Blackout County Health Department, and the there's an inspector who actually works for the fire department. And code enforcement. Yeah, and there's an annual license that has to be applied for. They cannot get that license if we do not pass their inspections each year.
Are they gonna have a timeframe to get the hard surfaces in place? Could they be able to operate conditionally until they had those things?
To do that, typically we require that as you're developing the site. The only way that you could not do that is to apply for variance to do a temporary serve hard servicing until the project is complete, which in this particular situation, I don't know that that'd be something we'd support.
And one last question. Last time the applicant was here, there was some discussion about they had been administratively dissolved with the Secretary of State. Has that been resolved? Do they exist yet?
I don't believe so, no. The applicant is here, or someone on his behalf is here, you might be able to answer that one.
Mrs. Thornsberry, I have a question. This eight-foot fence, I'm not clear with the terminology because it changes in several sections, is it a block fence or is it metal?
It's typically a metal solid fence.
Okay. I feel that's similar, there's a fence where you go to the brush dump to see brush dump on.
Yes.
The Mitchell Avenue, that, okay.
Right, and that's why we require the. Right, and that's why we require the dark earth-ton color because it kind of softens the metal look.
I do have another question. When we talk about the fluids, the gasoline, the oil, the antifreeze and whatever, not to be discharged on the ground, and if it happens, then is that a DNR responsibility or is it our own local code enforcement?
It'll begin with our annual inspection and if we find violations, those violations can be reported to the Iowa DNR for investigation.
Is there a provision that would allow more extemporaneous inspections? Not annually, maybe it got spilled in January and you all don't look at it till December, but in the meantime, there's been some contamination to the groundwater?
I don't know that, right now, our policy is annually. I don't, I'm not for sure how often the Iowa DNR does inspections, but they have their own schedule that they would take a look at salvage yards. So I don't know if I can quite answer that question at this time.
Does the city ever do spot checks?
The only kind of spot check that there might be is if there was a complaint and code enforcement would go out and take a look. And they typically would take planning and zoning with them.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion for staff? Okay, and if not, if I could call a timeout here, I apologize, but I need, I've got a family obligation, I need to leave at five thirty. When I saw the agenda, I thought, oh no, it's not gonna be over by five thirty. And everybody in the audience, thank you all for being here, but it just will take a while to work through. Problem is, I thought maybe I'd turn it over to Matt Mead, but you have a family obligation until six? At six. Anybody that would like to chair the meeting besides Matt, I mean, so we don't switch twice? Great, if that's all right, I will record the on and step at five thirty to thank you all, but we still have the, I guess we're still in the public hearing phase with staff and now to hear from people in the audience, but then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you all, sorry for this.
Mrs. Tackett, for those of you who wish to speak for against this request, we would ask that you would please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking into the microphones. Yes, sir.
My name's Kirk Ashleman, I'm with Keston Associates for the ones who grew up the site layout for you. And to answer your immediate question about inspection, Iowa DNR and federal EPA both had regulations that were more strict than what the city has. Your comment about periodic check, it's kind of like what the rules used to be with stormwater, that you had to have a weekly inspection and after every rainfall of a certain amount. That situation kind of fits this and the, not, the applicant also has to cover any spillage. There are guidelines laid out on that. The timeframe within which they have to report that to DNR, DNR then reports to EPA, but that, Iowa DNR is the one that oversees that. But they will, they have a time period with, in which they have to report to the state that they've had a spill, what actions they are taking to remediate that and get it corrected. Iowa DNR has expressed the fact that because of the past history with this site, this is, it sounds ironic, but it's an optimum site for them because like with the health issue, they do have past history on this property. So there's, there is already a baseline established for groundwater in this area. I'm just here to answer any technicals.
Thank you.
Rick Westball. Twenty-two thirty-two Avon, Waterloo. Mr. Western said that there are periodic inspections of these salvage yards. I have some pictures here of a salvage yard on Blackhawk that the city has been dealing with for years. And if this is the kind of salvage yard we're allowing in our city, you can only imagine what will happen up on Airline Highway. If you would show those to the people there, I would appreciate it. I also am very concerned about our water up there. Many of the people up there have wells and there's a lot of standards by the DNR and everybody else, but who's gonna monitor them? You know, if nobody blows a whistle on this guy, he's gonna get away with whatever he can. I would like you to hear the rest of the people up here, there's plenty of us out here that have the same concerns and with the water syst, wells that we have up there, the city won't put a water system up there because it is cost prohibitive and if, once the wells are contaminated, if that should happen, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Little and I live at eight oh three Midland Street, about two blocks south of this project. I have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments and going through the information that was, that the commission had today, there was a letter here from the DNR that's double-sided, two thousand six and two thousand eight. And I don't know much about ground sampling or anything like that, but is this the most current letter that's available? And if so, are they good forever? I mean, when they determine that there's, it's not contaminated and they're good forever?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. Typically, we will not have DNR letters for a request like this. It's because this property has past history of contamination and DNR, city and DNR enforcement action, the end result of that action led to a no further action determination by the DNR, so that's what that is. So it's not any sort of like annual, you know, it's not a result of some sort of annual inspection or pop-in inspection, it's a result of the end of enforcement action from cleanup efforts because of contamination that was spilled, giving a no further action required. It was saying it was cleaned up at least to a point that the DNR was not requiring further action.
Well, the letter dated August ninth, two thousand six, it says the next step to be addressed will be to address the solid waste issue at the site. Is the back page of two thousand eight addressing this two thousand six?
That's my understanding, yes.
Which they're recommending further testing?
The applicant may be able to speak further to the letters from the DNR.
Well, it says if an endorsement is sought on the property, it may be enrolled in the Iowa Land Recycling Program, which would involve a thorough investigation and assessment of the risks associated with possible uses of this property. Has that been done or is that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Also on the information that was given out, I believe, to the board here on page, this is confusing, on page thirty-nine, second paragraph, it says about the fourth line down, that staff does not believe the proposed use would have a significant impact on the surrounding properties. Page thirty-eight, fourth paragraph, last sentence, we're talking about a special permit and this is due to the potential impact that this type of use can have on the area. A little confusing. No impact, but potential impact. Also, I believe in the meeting last December, there was a petition presented and I believe there were about thirty-one, I think, Chris, you said thirty-one on there? The letters were sent out to residents, I believe, within a two hundred and fifty feet area of that property, which I think is very restricted. It's not very far, but thirty-one, thirty-one people signing within two hundred and fifty feet, to me, when I look on the county map, it looks like a hundred percent. One hundred percent of the people sign in opposition to this, which I think is, is pretty good. I think it shows quite a bit of opposition to this project. Today in Waterloo, we have twenty-three junkyards. Twenty-three. Four or five within a close distance of this proposed project. Last night, I went on the city of Waterloo's website and watched the video from December third meeting of last year. There was a gentleman, he spoke, and I couldn't hear his name, but he's here tonight, he said that he performed the survey and design work on this project. Member Mike Young asked this gentleman repeatedly, who is the operator? He answered, five are looking at the location, but only one will purchase it. So I asked the same question today, who is purchasing it? Who is it? Who's the operator? Do we know who the operator is? Gentleman also went on to state something to the effect that he said when he was a teenager, he heard the same thing, that nobody wanted this in our backyard. Well, I think when that's said, it's generally meant to be within their area. This project is in the backyard of some of these folks out here. He also went on to say, this is in the best interest for the community. Well, I've lived through all my life and I think the city has taken, I think leaps and bounds to help out the north side. We've lost some projects, it's, it's not the city's fault, I think it's what the developers want to go. The sixty-three road project hopefully will improve this area and spur some development. But with this project, it's just gonna be another barrier. We're trying to develop that area, we have, since I've lived there, we got a new Hy-Vee, we got a subway, I think it is, a few other businesses. Allen Hospitals put a lot of money in their facility out there, both in the hospital and the college, which the college is very close to this proposed project. Within the last year, a new senior citizen complex northward has been built and this is even closer to the project. You know, I think the seniors out there, they're gonna set out back hoping to hear the birds and that car's being crushed. This can be very close to it. I'm also, looking towards the future, and I, I believe in Waterloo and I think things are gonna happen here. And if businesses continue to locate or locate, I firmly believe that I think we're gonna be looking at expansion of our airport. More flights, more development in that area. Junkyard right down the path from, you look at Cedar Rapids, directly when you get off of three eighty to go to the airport, you see hotels and restaurants. What are we gonna see in the area of the airport? So I'd just like to end him up these other folks, but I'm very confident that some new businesses are gonna come up throughout the sixty-three area. I just hope that this project is denied and we've been very patient, there's been, you know, things going on in other areas of the city, we've been patient, but this is gonna set us back, definitely. So I just ask that you deny this project and listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Eric Frye, I live in nine twenty-five Midland. I'm a no guy. I moved to my area in two thousand six from Greenbrier. And when I moved out there, I lived in Greenbrier for fourteen years, but when I moved out my area, I didn't even know this area was out there. And I thought, this is Waterloo's best-kept secret. And I still believe that. I have worked my butt off and spent a fortune trying to improve the appearance of my property and I know for a fact that there's a lot of people on that area have done the same thing. Put a junkyard out there is not gonna help the appearance and the reputation of our neighborhood. We got one a mile to the south, we got one now to the northwest a mile, and like, my neighbor here says, we have an airport. What are people gonna see when they come into Waterloo, Iowa? Nothing but a ju, bunch of junk cars. I come to Cedar Rapids and I see nice things when I come down, out there, come into the airport. And, and another thing, you know, and I have done a lot of fixing up in my yard, my neighbors will verify that. I've hauled four dumpsters of debris out of my property just since two thousand six. And my reward for that is you guys have increased my property tax eight hundred dollars since two thousand six. We have a salvage yard, like I said, to the south, to the north. People are already avoiding coming to Waterloo because of stuff like this. We do not need another junkyard in our neighborhood. If you guys, if, if this city actually, if we wanna build and make the city better, you know, I look at the Logan Plaza right now, just one big crumbled up parking lot, nothing's over there. You know, and I know that anybody hears particular problem because maybe the property owner just doesn't wanna give it up, I don't know. But like the neighbor says, we've got a subway, we've got a Chinese place where we got a nice residential home for, for the elder. The hospital's made a ton of improvements and they're fixing sixty-three, when it's done, it's gonna be a fantastic way of getting through Waterloo for travelers that are going north and south. I just, I just, let's use some common sense here. People are moving to Waverly because of the taxes in Blackhawk County. They're moving to Waverly and Denver and other surrounding cities because they wanna get out of Waterloo and Blackhawk County. So if you guys, if you, people really wanna see a change and have people stay in Waterloo and be proud of Waterloo, let's stop this crap. Let's get rid of these ideas. Bring your junkyard somewhere else, we don't need it here in Waterloo. We have enough of them. My final three words, enough is enough.
Thank you.
Willie Smith, William Smith. Everybody hear me? Okay, we got this letter. Now, we've been battling this problem for a while.
What's your address?
I'm the city. I'm gonna reiterate what that man said, there's thirty-one of us petition, we got twelve on this list.
Sir, we just need your address for the record, sir.
Twenty-two sixty Ashland. I'm clear at the end of Ashland, adjacent to Leonard's property, this salvage yard. I've put up with Kelly Fries and Christie Trucking for years. Leonard owns the property now, I don't wanna see it again. Now, if you bring the picture up of Midland, Midland North is nothing but wells and septic tanks, there's no city service except for electricity. My daughter just built a half-million-dollar house on Ashland Avenue. Beautify the area. We all have acreages, we love it. We've put our efforts into making it nice. I'm right at that bottom red line. You'll see a little pond over there, and I got ten acres right there. I'm as further north as you can go to run into Leonard's property. From Midland North, we have wells and septic tanks. Mark Little's got city water to his place, Midland and Ashland. We battled with this, they said DNRs went through Leonard's place, I don't, I can't remember his last name, whatever. But anyway, you can see water there. There was a city truck up there, three-ten today, a city pickup on Ashland Avenue, and he come roaring down towards the south to Donald Street. Why he was there, I don't know, but I thought maybe he's checking on the property, maybe he's thinking it's gonna be okay. But anyway, we've all requested, thirty-one of us on a list, a petition, say no to this problem. Nobody wants to listen. Planning and zoning's gotta do their job, you folks gotta do your job, city council, Board of Adjustment. On this letter, it says, the City of Waterloo Technical Review Committee. Who is that? Recommended this salvage yard. The City of Waterloo Technical Review Committee. Who is that?
This is Schrader with staff. The city has a technical review committee that's made up of various departments, staff, city staff, as well as other utility companies and other agencies to provide technical information on requests. They do not make a recommendation. They, they meet ahead of meetings and they discuss any technical issues, concerns that might come up surrounding a request, but they do not make a recommendation. Staff makes a recommendation, the planning and zoning staff do make a recommendation on requests.
Well, this is city review committee recommended.
That was an air.
Approval.
That was an air.
Okay, just like the man said on Midland, he'd been there since oh-six or whatever. I was born and raised out there in the Samber Patches and it's called Cushman Heights back then. There's, nothing's changed except electricity since nineteen thirty-eight. I've been there, back in there since nineteen seventy-nine, building new homes. I've been there, back in there since nineteen seventy-nine, building new homes. You see, we all have acreages. We try to do a good job. Our taxes keep going up. We don't have the city service except for garbage, garbage pickup. But they've shoved alters down our throat, Wiseman. Ron Plum on WC F and M has a repair shop, supposedly junkyard. Deary Brothers, or Deary had business next to the DNR or whoever it is there on Airline. Now they got a marquee, "We buy junk cars." Glenn Beckman bought that from Deary's. Hill Fiber Auction Place. One of the Fuller boys from Vic Fuller Salvage moved in out there. They pushed that down our throat. We didn't hear nothing about it. We didn't see nothing about any of that being done. And now this salvage yard of Leonard's wants to go in there. And I'm going to let everybody else tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Tim Luce, attorney. I'm representing Leonard Hoglet and Valentine Enterprises. Just a couple of things. First of all, there's no, there's been no decision by the owner that he's going, that he is going to turn this into a junkyard salvage yard. What they have done is they have gone back through with the city staff to meet every requirement that they put on them. The property's zoned properly for this type of an activity. He wants to have it ready to do that if somebody coming in wants to purchase it and turn it into that. The restrictions are all going to be the same. They're going to be met. I know that he will, if you ask him, if he were to do this, which I don't believe he's going to, but if he were, he has no intent on doing some temporary situation. He's going to meet every one of the requirements that's been set forth by the city. And I think what the, what we'd ask the members of the committee to keep in mind is that this is zoned this way. He has met all the requirements that the city staff has put on. We've spent a lot of time and effort in doing that. We've also heard back, and I believe the city has the letter from the Department of Human Resources, or from Natural Resources, that supports industrial redevelopment in these brownfield areas. It's not, it's not going to ever be satisfactory for residential use, but it can be done for industrial use, and they recommend this. So it's our belief that this should be approved, that these conditions will have to be met as it goes forward, that the city has the necessary enforcement provisions to take care of it if there are problems. And he understands what those are. And again, he wants to have the permission. It's not saying that he's going to use it, but perhaps somebody that he would sell it to in the future would. So we think he's met everything that needs to be done. We just ask for the permission to go forward.
This is Tack. I have a question, sir.
Yes?
Just so I'm clear, so we're all clear here, just trying to putting the pieces together. We have Valentine Enterprises that is technically still dissolved and not resolved from the state. So is this Valentine Enterprises, is this?
It's, well, Leonard Hoglet owns Valentine Enterprises. He did let that lapse because he wasn't sure where this was going to go, but it can be reinstated, and that's something he's asked me to do now, which we will get done. But he is the one that's making the, Valentine Enterprises is the one that's making the request.
Okay, so you-
But that is going to be something that we will be getting reestablished with the state.
So you have a dissolved entity making a request? Just so I'm clear.
Well, Leonard?
Yes?
Do you want to come up and speak to that for a second?
I don't know. Can we legally do that? I'm just asking a question. If it's a dissolved entity and it's not filed and it's in here, can, I'm just asking clarification.
My understanding is, yes, it can be. There's what would stop it from that?
Well, I'm just seeing a request for Valentine Enterprises. If this gets on record dated today, but there's no legal Valentine Enterprises LLC, I'm just thinking on behalf of the city, on behalf of residents, legally, I'm wondering, since you are correct, you're the owner, you're the one that's applying for it, I'm wondering why your name is on there until that's resolved?
We have no problem putting your name on. It started out, back when we started this process, back in two thousand and thirteen, I believe, I believe it was still an established corporation. I wish-
I know.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because we're here today, and it is September of two thousand and fourteen, and this was back in December two thousand and thirteen, and I'm looking for requests of Valentine Enterprises. I'm just, I'm a forward-thinking person. A business owner, I like to think ahead. I'm looking, if this Valentine Enterprises is not legally established, but you're making the request, I'm just thinking down the road, could that be a box of worms? Do we want to tackle that? Is there, could there be something to come back if anything is wrong? Because if this is not, if it's, the request is by Valentine Enterprises LLC, and they look back in the records that there is no Valentine Enterprises LLC filed, I'm wondering if the request should have been done in your name, and what should we do? I'm just seeking legality.
This is Schrader with staff. So a point of clarification, the application that was actually submitted, which is on page fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six, does list the applicant as Valentine Enterprises LLC slash Leonard Hoglet. So, and the signature on the bottom is Leonard. So I'm not really sure to address the dissolution of Valentine Enterprises LLC, but the application was marked as both Valentine Enterprises and Leonard Hoglet.
Okay. Excuse me. Eric, where does that, I don't see that here. I'm looking at page fifty-two.
Fifty-two, number one applicant, application information, A, applicant's name.
Well, we don't have a purchaser at this time, correct? So what you're asking is you want to have this approved in case a salvage yard would want to come and purchase it. But if not, can this property still be purchased for other uses?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we, we, anyway, if anyone wants to purchase it for, as long as it meets the required zone, we have no problem with that. It's not Leonard's intent to keep this forever. His intent was to purchase this as an investment property and use it for, you're still currently living on the property, I believe, aren't you?
Yes, I am. And so that you folks know, since I purchased the property, prior to and after I purchased it, some, close to fifty thousand dollars has been spent to clean the place up. And this is going to continue, whether or not someone comes in to purchase it as a salvage yard, or whether I'm going to do it just to get it prepared for whomever wishes to purchase it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience at this time?
We can have maybe just one or two more comments, just to, no, you can go, sir. I'm just thinking, just for the sake of time and thank you for folks.
I live at nine-five Midland. And I know a while back, Pete Wallace, the one that was government desig, and the city told him, I don't know what it was, the city had told him that the area out there was considered a blight area, yet you want to put a salvage yard in? That don't sound right at all to me. And another thing is, you were saying, Mr. Gustafson, about the last people that were up here, about the place over on Green Hill Road and stuff, and that they've been living out there for years. You know, you don't think that should, it isn't right for what they're doing. A lot of these people have lived out there for years. I'm sixty-five. I was born up there. I still live up there. And it's not right. I don't care. Maybe that's why Pat's Auto Salvage was out there at his place yesterday. Maybe he's going to be the one to buy it. I see this truck out there, Pat's Auto Salvage. Maybe he's already got a deal made. You don't know. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Molly Plunkett, twenty-one thirty-five Ashland Avenue. I just built a brand-new house on Ashland. My fiancee and I broke ground a couple of years ago on it. I, I have a little bit of a hard time understanding. I know that you guys don't do taxes, but I have a little bit of a hard time understanding how City of Waterloo can send me a tax assessment for property taxes of six thousand nine hundred and some dollars and then put a junkyard next to me. I didn't build a house to have a junkyard next to me. We've worked very hard and poured everything we have into this land. I grew up, my father, Willie, he lived there his whole life. I loved the property, loved the land, wanted to get back there. As soon as we had the chance to do it, we poured everything we had to build a house there. I have two sons. My youngest son is currently in high school and goes to a private school across town. And I do everything in my power to get people to come to our side of town, because I want them to see our little piece of paradise, because that's really what it is back there for all of us. It's our slice. We do everything we can to make it that way. We worked very hard to get there. And I don't want to set everything back because now I'm living next to a junkyard, and people think that they can't come over to our side of town. They can't come to my house. And what did you build that brand-new house for, to be next to a junkyard? All of these people love this land. That's why we're here tonight. And I know that you're concerned about the time, and I understand that. I know that we've had a lot of things on the agenda tonight, and it's taken a long time. But it might not seem like a lot of signatures when you say thirty-one, but it is. It's all of us. There's a lot of land between us, and we do everything, we watch each other's backs. We don't need this. This is not what we worked so hard for. Thank you.
Thank you. And no, we appreciate you speaking out. It does help us with our decisions, so thank you.
I just got a short question. Leonard, I appreciate that you spent a lot of money fixing the place up, but no offense, but it doesn't show. I drive by there several times a week on my way home from work. You drive by my place as opposed to the way it looked eight years ago, and I think any of my neighbors would say the place looks much better. Now, you say that, Chris, you said that the DNR, the city goes out and tests the ground with water occasionally, or for environmental issues, or how does that work?
The city does not do any sampling or anything like that. We inspect for certain, there are three different departments. Fire Department inspects for fire lanes and different things like that. Planning and zoning looks at, you know, whether you're keeping the stacks below the fence and different things like that. And the Health Department looks for a certain number of tires. You don't have so many tires on the site at one time. They look for spills and batteries and things of that nature, make sure everything's stored correctly.
Well, Mike, I guess my point is, is I've been to a lot of junkyards, and there hasn't been one junkyard that I've been to where I don't see oil and gas and debris on the ground. Not one junkyard. And I don't spend my life filling the junkyards, but there's not been ever a junkyard where I don't see that contamination on the ground. I work with State of Iowa with a meat and poultry food safety division. We have a, we, I have to check the locker plants around here to make sure they got their water standards, their sanitation standards. That's my job. Now, I don't know how it works around here, but my job is to randomly stop in these places and check to see if they're meeting their requirements. I know for a fact that a lot of grocery stores and restaurants are on a schedule. They're told a month ahead of time when the food inspector or the inspection and appeals or the Health Department's going to stop by and check on them. Our division doesn't work that way. Now, I don't know how the DNR works or how you guys work, but randomly stopping, what's going to happen if you find out that Mr. Leonard isn't meeting the standards? What are you supposed to do? Are there repercussions? Because by the time you catch it, it's too late, he's already there. I don't think we, as a community, can take that chance of assuming that they're going to go by the guideline. You know, this is a very dangerous thing that we're dealing with here. When you're talking about chemicals in the ground, we got, we got families that are trying to raise kids, and that goes for any area of Waterloo. You've got to think about the overall effect of how this is going to have to do, not just for our neighborhood, just for, but for the, like I said earlier, for the whole community in Waterloo. We don't need to have more junkyards around here. I don't know, what'd you say, we had thirty-one?
Twenty-one and three.
Twenty-three junkyards. Are you serious? We got more junk cars than we do wrecked junk cars in town, the way it sounds to me. You know, we don't need any more of this stuff. And, you know, Mr. Smith over here says, he's been living there for forty years, since nineteen thirty-eight, is that what you said?
Yeah.
You know, I knew, I, you know, I just want to make this the final thing. I used to be friends with Kelly Fries. I used to be. And I used to go fishing out there at the pond a lot. And when I go fishing or when I take a sun ice skating out there, in the summertime, we see a rainbow of film on that water out there. Now, you guys can't tell me that's not going into the ground. And that was chemical. That's fertilizer, and he also had trucks out there that were junk, salvage junk trucks. So don't tell me, anyway in the world, that there is not going to be a contamination issue. I know there will be. I guarantee it. Anywhere where there's a junkyard, there's contamination issues.
Thank you.
Pat Burke, one-three-zero, Sabrina Circle. I have a couple of questions. One is that if this would not be approved, the special permit, does it still go before the Board of Adjustments? That's my, one other issue came that was disapproved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but then it still went before the Board of Adjustment. And I, the statute kind of reads confusing.
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation only. There's actually two requests here. Because this site is owned M-two-P Planned Industrial District, it needs a site plan amendment. They make a recommendation on that request to the City Council. Because it is a salvage yard, the salvage yard, the zoning ordinance requires a special permit, and for special permits, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment. So yes, it's a recommendation on both regards, and assuming the applicant wants it to, it would go on to both the Council and the Board of Adjustment regardless of the commission's The site plan amendment, if it is recommended for denial, or if the petition of opposition equals twenty percent of the landowner within two hundred feet, also would require a supermajority vote of the Council to approve.
Okay. So my other question is, are we doing both hearings simultaneously right now, the site plan amendment and the special permit?
This is Schrader with staff. I would say yes, although technically, a special permit does not require a hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's just a public meeting.
Okay. But I guess I'd like to just remind the Planning and Zoning Commission then that a special permit's not supposed to be issued, and it's going to be addressed to the enjoyment and use of the property owners that are already there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have one more, so we can address this and have it come to a vote, so we can decide, and then we can hopefully move forward for everyone.
Hello? Hello? My name is Pat Morsey, and I'm the City Councilperson for Ward Three, which this is in. And one of the things that I want to make sure you realize is that every one of the people that are residents in that area out there is against this. And this is a time that you can say no to this. I'm totally against this. We don't need a twenty-four junkyard in Waterloo, Iowa. We can make use of what we have. Matter of fact, we should get rid of some of them that are there right now. One of the things that people haven't pointed out real specifically is a property devaluation that goes with having a junkyard in your area. And think about that in terms of where you live. Please, think about it in terms of the environmental impact that establishing a junkyard, because this, you know, if you want to be real nice and sweet and say it's a salvage yard, go ahead, but it's a junkyard. And it's going to deposit not just chemicals and crap, but it's going to deposit things that are eyesores, things that are noisy, things that are basically non-conducive to having your family raised in that area. Now, I've been pilloried for making some suggestions about a particular area of town being turned into a very family-oriented area, and that certain adult businesses should probably get out of there. Well, here we got the reverse. We've got family-oriented residential properties. We've got a Highway sixty-three corridor that the north side of Waterloo wants to see developed. We've got an industrial park, and I don't know why this place, this salvage yard, can't go to that industrial park. We've got all that there, and now we're trying to get approved to put a junkyard in the middle of that? That's bass ackwards, in my opinion, and it needs to be rejected and rejected soundly by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We need development out in that area. Ward Three needs development. Ward Four needs development. Please do the right thing and say no to this. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Pat. Okay, if it's real quick, sir, yeah, then we'll get right to the vote. Okay, final comment and just...
What we're asking for is permission for a permit. We're not saying that it's going to be salvage yard. There's a hundred and one uses under M two P, many of which are altogether different than a salvage yard. But we're asking permission for a permit. That's all at this point in time. We're asking for a permit in case someone wants to use it. Might not even be a salvage yard as such, maybe something else. There's another point here. They mentioned that there's twenty-some salvage yards. How do they get past? What rights, what legal rights do they have to have a salvage yard a mile down from you there as well, just recently? Why were they granted? And now everyone says, I can't have one? Or the possibility of having one? I want the place to be up for sale to the best buyer out there that will make it the best place possible. But if it happens to be someone that wants to make it a salvage yard, you're going to say no, even though there's twenty-one or two or three other ones? Doesn't sound fair to me. That's my statement, and I'm going to continue to clean up. I know the gentleman mentioned, well, he didn't spend the fifty thousand dollars, and we're going to spend more time and more money until it does get sold. But in the meantime, I'd like to have that permission that I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question without coming up there? I live on Airline Highway.
Sir, yeah, we'd like to move on.
Just a short, quick question. You keep saying all of this, but I don't get an answer. I live at eight sixty-one West Airline Highway. Okay, my name is Bob Corio. You guys keep saying you contact people within two hundred and fifty feet of this property line. Why are the people in that area not contacted? I've given you two different lists of people on the list that are opposed to this, and yet I only got one letter, one, that dates back to two thousand thirteen. Why did I get taken off the list?
We mailed the property owners within two hundred and fifty foot surrounding the outer boundary of the property in question. That was mailed on August twenty-ninth, I believe it was, ten days, ten days ago.
It wasn't mailed to us. But it wasn't mailed to me. Why do we limit this to two hundred and fifty feet?
I can't address what, if the post office didn't deliver some, but we sent a letter in the mail to every property owner record within two hundred and fifty foot of the property in question.
Why do we limit this to two hundred and fifty feet?
That's what the ordinance says. Why the ordinance says that is a number has to be set. As you go out farther, you're going to... It also matches the state code requirement. Actually, it's gray. Yeah, the state code requires two hundred, and we go out two hundred and fifty, so we exceed state code by fifty feet. It could be out farther, but that's more expense, more taxpayer expense.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, it's been moved in a second. If we close the hearing, is there any discussion?
Mrs. Morrison, I have some comments. The reason that I asked the question about...
We're going to close it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next time, just whack.
You're fine.
The reason that I asked the question about the dissolution was not to bring into question their legal status, but I wanted to use that to demonstrate a point, and that is the simplest piece of compliance. It's a fifty-dollar online application to the state to be reinstated, and we made that request in December. It's September, and they're still thinking about it. So, my point is, I find it hard to believe compliance on greater issues, the eight restrictions that we're asking to be put in place, is probably likely to not happen. And so, I would ask you to consider that when we're looking at compliance and how likely it is to happen.
Mrs. Thornsbury, I have a question, too. Is this, the thirty-one people, is that actually the one hundred percent of the two hundred and fifty, Eric?
We would have to take a look at that. I would seriously doubt that the...
You guys have a letter, right, that you sent? You've got a list of names that you sent out?
I've got a list of names. We have not compared that out, but there's landowners that were on there. There aren't any homes. Agricultural landowners within that two hundred and fifty foot. I mean, maybe they're on there, too. We'd have to look at that. I mean, it is, I think, a very high likelihood that it will reach the twenty percent requirement.
And I have a question, too, along the statement that was made. We deny the special permit. It still stays M two. So, there's plenty of other properties that could be purchased that are not... So, because it's only if you're going to do a salvage yard, you need a special permit. That's my one question. And the second is, if it's sold to someone and they want to turn it into a salvage yard, couldn't they just come before the commission as well and do that on their own?
Yes, they could, and that is a good point. It is owned M two P Planned Industrial. Although, if it's not going to be a salvage yard, depending on what other use it would be that would be permitted in the M two P, it may or may not have to go through a site plan amendment process, depending on if it's considered a change of use from what was previously there or if they're changing the layout, site plan, adding buildings, things like that, they'll have to come back through the site plan amendment process. But it is owned M two P Planned Industrial District. And there was, you know, the three hundred-foot buffer from the south that the applicant agreed to, and staff was, as part of the recommendation, recommending that the south thirteen hundred feet. So, it's thirteen hundred feet from any of those properties to the south, based on the staff's recommendation. There are some homes to the northwest. They're zoned out along Airline Highway in an industrial area with an industrial park to the west and shown as industrial on the future land use map. So, I think there was that question regarding a previous request as to, you know, taking into consideration. And I'm not saying don't take into consideration residents, not at all. But, you know, the question was from the difference. And I would say with this one, the difference is it's zoned M two P Planned Industrial and has been since the nineteen eighties.
Amen. We heard a denial on that other deal at Progress Street. Are we going to hear that here for this particular issue? We're to deny.
Oh, we're... Is that down further? We're getting there. Is there any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to add, before we go to a motion, that of the thirty-one people who've signed in opposition, I know that the agricultural owner is in the room and is not on the petition, but he is opposed, and I'm sure he would be happy to sign in addition. He owns a large portion along the side of it that's well within the two hundred and fifty feet.
Anything else?
Oh, I do have one question. Thornsbury here. The special permit, is that for the plot of land or is it for the owner of the land? The plot of land.
For the interest of a motion here, we need to separate these two in terms of a motion, site plan amendment and...
That's up to the commission. You can do them together. You can separate them.
I would like to make a motion to deny both the site plan amendment and special permit.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in a second that we deny both the special permit and the site plan amendment. Is there any further discussion?
So, wait. Vote of aye is a vote to deny.
We'll just do straight for now and see what happens. All those in favor of denying both the site amendment and special permit, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking the time. We don't ever want to seem like your time is not valued. We have stayed here for longer, and it is important to hear. So, thank you, all of you on those sides for coming and attending to that. And with that, we'll move along. Does anybody need a little restroom break? We'll break for about three minutes, and we'll go take a break. Twenty-six. The next item on the agenda is a request by the Bosnian Islamic Association Waterloo Incorporated for a special permit to allow for the establishment of a cemetery generally located south of Marigold Drive and north of Memory Lane. Okay, and staff report.
This is Grandma Staff. The applicant's proposing a special permit in order to establish a new cemetery on the property, which is part of a new development on the property, which will also include a new mosque, soccer field, playground, and several potential residential lots. The applicant has provided a site plan of the entire proposed development, which does show Marigold Drive being extended to the south. There's also a road being shown which would connect the road to the mobile home park to the south. And they're also showing an access to Highway two eighteen, which would require a DOT approval as well. The site is owned R four RP Planned Multiple Family Residence District and has been zoned as such since nineteen seventy-six. The zoning ordinance does require that a public or private cemetery use obtain a special permit, which is issued by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is due in part to its ability to be developed in many zoning districts, as well as the impacts that such a development can have on other public infrastructure. Back in September of two thousand thirteen, the Board of Adjustment approved a special permit to allow for the development of this property into a cemetery, mosque, soccer field, playground, and several potential residential lots. However, at that time, the site plan that was submitted was not a final site plan, but rather a preliminary plan that the applicant wanted approved so that they could move forward with the purchase of the property. The Board approved the request, subject to the condition that the applicant comes back through the special permit process once they have a more detailed site plan. The applicant did turn in a new site plan for the cemetery only, as that's the only development proposed at this time. The site plan shows a total of eight hundred and ten burial plots, shown in eleven different rows along the very west end of the property. The site plan also shows a setback of twenty feet from the west and south property lines, in addition to showing a privacy fence along those borders to screen the cemetery from the adjacent mobile home park. They're also showing a thirty-two-by-twenty-four storage building directly to the north of the cemetery, which would be used to store items that the cemetery would use for its upkeep and maintenance. The site plan does not show where access will be gained to the site. And actually, what I just passed out to you is an updated site plan that staff just received this afternoon, which does show the, where they will be gaining access to the site. They will be gaining access off of an extension of Marigold Drive to the south with an entrance and then a parking lot and then a drive access to the cemetery storage building. I'm going to skip by that stuff. Staff has noted, if they are going to use that Marigold Drive extension, it will need to be paved as well. In addition to the parking, the parking lot that they're proposing is shown as recycled asphalt, which is not an approved hard surface. So, that would have to go to the Board of Adjustment for variance. There are some sanitary, sanitary and storm sewer lines that do run through this property. However, it doesn't appear that any of those utility lines run through this area where the cemetery is being located. However, there are other areas on the property where they will, that they run, that will need to be addressed in the future with their future development. Therefore, staff is recommending the special permit for the cemetery only be approved as the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area, as it would be utilizing an existing vacant parcel, and the request would be in conformance with the conference of plan and would be a good infill development that would utilize existing utilities and services and subject to the following conditions. One, that the final, the site plan meet all applicable city code regulations, including but not limited to parking, drainage landscaping, et cetera. And two, that a minimum six-foot-tall solid fence is constructed along the west and south borders of the cemetery to screen the adjacent mobile home park. Questions for staff?
I got a question. This is Tackett. When the original site plan was, my understanding that the cemetery had to be a part of it, that this does not get approved, then the rest would not be together, that they all had to be cemetery, sports center, and mosque. And in this case, there's residential lots that are looking to be added. I'm sorry, I was a clarion question. My understanding was that the cemetery had to be a part of this package when they originally came to us. Is that still my understanding?
They didn't want them just a mosque approved without the cemetery.
Okay, and it still stands?
Yeah, and right. And now they're asking for the approval of the cemetery. As noted, this is about, like I said, about a year ago, where they didn't have a very good plan, and so it was just preliminarily approved so the applicants could move forward with the purchase of the property. And then, once they came with detailed plans, they would come through this process again so the commission and the public would have a chance to see what they're actually proposing. So, this is the first phase of that. They're only ready to move forward with the cemetery. They have no plans for the mosque or anything yet. And that will have to come back through the same process when they provide those plans. So, at this time, it's just the cemetery only at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking to the microphones.
Hello, that's Scott. I'm property manager of Southview Estates, three, four, five, one, East Orange Road. I have not seen the detailed site plan. I was at the previous meeting and was told that everybody would be in touch and they would, you know, cover everything. I've not heard a word since, not from a developer, not from a real estate or person, not from the owner. This is the first notice I received, and I received it yesterday at about five p.m. when I got mailed. The owners of my property purchased it in July of two thousand fourteen. They are located with their headquarters in Canada. No one's had a chance to get here. We have had some conversations with the surveyors. The surveyors were using an outdated plat, and so right now, there is still some conversations going on as to where the actual borders are, including the fact that Memory Lane, where they are talking about bringing the access road, is on my private property. And when I talked to the surveyor, he said the city could do that. I paid people to plow that. I paid to maintain that. And that Memory Lane will extend into my property several blocks to get access to a city street. So, I've got a lot of concerns about that, first and foremost, the traffic and how fast this is going through. And I have not seen a detailed site plan, and no one has still answered the questions about what exactly will be entailed in regards to the burial and to the services or anything. I'm concerned about traffic and noise, and, you know, there was some discussion last time that they don't involve. I don't know that. But I want those answers for the three hundred and some residences that are on my property. I know they keep talking about it's one owner and a mobile home, but there are three hundred and some residents. Yes, they are mobile homes. Those are residents of Waterloo that do pay their taxes and also...
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Kirk Cash, Home Management and Associates. And I apologize, I'm the surveyor you talked to. I'm not sure where the reference to an updated survey came from, but we've located all the...
An updated plat.
We've located all the iron pins around the property. One of the issues, if you look at this map, you can see there's a curve around the pond. That was something, that was an issue. They had problems with trying to figure out where the curve was. So, we actually threw a few extra points in there to establish where the curve was. The concern she has, if you look at this map, and this was prepared by an architect, there's two issues. One, they're showing a proposed access at some point to LaPorte Road. The second, well, it isn't LaPorte Road. There isn't.
LaPorte, I don't care about.
It's Washington. Well, whatever. Anyway, the other one is down in the southwest, at Westerly Point. You can see the road within the mobile home park dead ends, and they extended it, not understanding that that mobile home park is private. And who's running the screen?
I don't...
I want to give back up to... Two or... Well...
What do you want me to go to?
Go to the one that actually shows the plots. Yeah, okay. Now, that's not shown. This one was drawn at scale, more squared up, so that they could actually identify. They were looking for a little over three hundred lots to begin with, but I wanted to show a build-out of that area. If you go back to the other map?
This one?
Yeah. You can see where we've actually extended the southernly... You can see where we've actually extended the southern line of the cemetery far enough to literally cut off Memory Lane.
So that will no longer be an-
It's not an issue. We're not going to use it. We're severing access. We're severing access there.
And then what about Candle? Candle is a street that is half-owned by me and half-owned by the city.
Is that the one on the south side?
It's the one as you go, Memory Lane, the curve into my property. Candle Street, it's literally one house.
I'm not sure how that happened. If you look to the south end of the property, they actually were sold, portioned and vacated right away for, yeah, you can see it right there. Candle Street?
Half of the street is owned by the mobile home park, the other half is owned by the city.
Well-
Carnation?
Oh, it might be Carnation, sorry.
That's correct. Carnation. Can you go to the county map? I'm not sure what happened. There are actually two homes that have access to that street. And yet, if the deed was transferred to the Bosnians for that property.
But what we were told is the right half is homeowners, and the street is the city. The left half, I plow and maintain. They cut it right down the middle of the street.
The current, the current county records indicate what's being shown right here. And I've got question marks myself about that issue. But at this point in time, we were just trying to settle the issue over the cemetery. One of the issues was, okay, where are you going to put the parking lot like that? They don't know if they're going to build the mosque two years from now, five years from now. It could be 10 years from now. They've got a mosque. They just don't have any place to bury members of the- I'm forgiving, I'm not Muslim, so I don't know the terms, but their congregation. There are very, I know there are very specific rules in which they're to be buried. They have to be facing towards Mecca, and so there's a Kibla.
Facing to the right.
Asma, and that was shown on the survey work and everything. That's why those plots are skewed at the angle they're skewed at, so they're facing in the right direction. That is an issue that still needs to be addressed. My comment is even by prescription. Those people still have access. But right now, it has been transferred to the association. And at some point in time, they're going to need to address that. But my comment is, I've already severed the direct access to the mobile home park. I'm actually trying to talk about the access to LaPorte Road. I feel that Marigold is actually a commercial area, even though there isn't even a home going in here. There's several businesses that access off Marigold and like that. It would be, it actually exits some. I forget, is that traffic controlled there?
Because I just demanded to see the other mobile home park, that that would be accessible.
Okay, well, but my issue is trying to keep the church traffic like that away from Memory Lane. Access to 218.
No, thank you, no, thank you for sharing.
I'm not dealing with these people. I feel a little bit out of place because I don't really speak English.
No, you're fine. We appreciate all comments.
Conversation we're talking to.
Your concern is the access? Access and the logistics of the burial?
Well, the cemetery is laid out as best we could. And then, when there were concerns brought up about where the access was going to go, we've actually applied for variance to allow a temporary parking lot and driveway to be installed using recycled asphalt product. It's dust-free. In that way, they're not going to put a lot of expense into something that maybe want to end up tearing out because it doesn't fit what they end up with the final.
Is that like that substance that we had with that one church that we were looking at? Like a temporary hard pop? It's just like, okay.
Yeah. What it is, is it's when they're going in here to some of these streets and stuff, and you see a milling machine grinding off the asphalt surface, like it comes out in chips, like stone chips, but it still has some oil. And so, when you lay it out, like, that oil tends to keep it from being dusty. Makes a pretty good temporary product.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else in the audience?
I would just like to reiterate that we don't, we don't really know what the service entails, what the procession might entail, the traffic that's going to be here. There's just nothing that's really been told to us. I would think you guys would have questions, too. This is a pretty big thing and pretty important, and we know nothing. That's just my comment, thank you.
I do, actually, but I want to make sure everybody out there, all of you have an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone, is there anyone from the Islamic Center Association here that'd like to maybe answer any questions, share anything?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Do you want to entertain a motion to close the hearing? Or I guess an up and hearing? Okay. If you could please state your name and your address?
Hi, I'm Nikki Burns, and I'm at 20219 Avenue, I'm actually originally from Independence. I just had a couple of concerns. I studied anthropology and archaeology, concentrating in the Middle Eastern and Mediterranean areas. And if we're talking about true traditional Islamic burial, they did originate in the Middle East, as most of us know. And that is a very dry and arid climate, drastically different, as you can see from ours. Doesn't always require to, um, caskets or sarcophagus, like we even use in Louisiana, because of the climate. If they are going to go traditional, non-sarcophagus, non-casket burial, we're looking at decomposition in our soil there. With, if that plot was about 300 people, we're looking at decomposing above the water and sewage lines. I'm a little concerned environmentally speaking about what is going to go into the resources and what's going to affect irrigation systems and just the natural resources around, especially that close to residential areas. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Just to answer that last question, that is one of the issues that I brought up because I'm familiar with that part of it. My understanding is that we have to apply for a state permit, and the state oversees how that burial actually takes place. And I'm not sure what they've, I, there's actually another Muslim cemetery up off of Osage. And they've already got their state permit, and they've got several burials up there. I'm not sure how they deal with it. I come from, originally from Nebraska, and Native Americans would prefer to put theirs up on standards and have them closer to the sky. And they're not allowed to do that, so I know the state's going to oversee that issue, so.
Okay, that actually was a question I had.
One of my concerns also is what we're going to do to the groundwater.
I know, when I looked it up, just studying different world religions, and I looked at this, according to Sharia law, Muslims should be buried close to where they die, which is one of the reasons why they said many cemeteries are erected, so they can bury according to standards. When they are buried, they prefer to be wrapped in a shroud because it's to, basically, to level the equality when a person dies. So it's nothing very fancy, and caskets and casket can seem pretty ornate. But typically, they are wrapped in a shroud, they are said a prayer, and then they are laid into the ground. So that was my question, is if they do not use a casket, do we still need to use a vault? Because I know many states' vaults protect the surrounding, like, because of decomposition, and then it keeps it. And I don't know about Iowa, I'm originally from California, that's a requirement, you have to have a vault. Now, we do bury multiple up and down, with lots side by side. In Muslim tradition, it is one person per burial. So that was another consideration that I had, is if, one of the reasons is to be able to maintain within Islamic tradition, a typical burial can be accomplished under, you know, state law because of sanitations and stuff. And I know that we've had a lot of issues with summer land, and, you know, and we've had springs popping up, and I think that's something that's a legitimate concern. I think-
Another thing that enters into that is timeframe, because their preference is to make the burial before sunset of the same day.
Twenty-four hours.
Okay.
After Christmas, it has to be a theory, within that 24-hour time frame.
Okay. And I know you are correct, that they do, they are turned to the right, so they can face. And I think it's generally to the east. No, to the east, I think that's correct.
This is all of that, I have a question for Staff. Since then, since there isn't a representative here, have they communicated with you about any, that they weren't going to be here, or? Kirk is their representative on their behalf. We haven't really had any other communication. I know a communication barrier is an issue. I'm guessing it might be part of why they don't have someone here.
This is informal hearing, is it? So, do we need to close it? Oh, no, okay, so. Since this isn't a hearing, and we don't need a motion to close the hearing, is there any final thoughts from anyone in the audience at this time? Okay, I'd like to turn back to the commission.
It seems like, I know that we tabled this before and asked them to come back with more information. But I think, just based on the conversation that has gone on tonight, that we need more information before we can take that next step. The lady from the mobile home park said she just received the notice. And the people that own the mobile home park are in Canada. And she needs an opportunity to talk to them, to find out, you know, how do they feel about this? So, I would recommend that we tabled this application, and we asked them to bring back more information about some of the questions that we have in regards to the burial process, and also, the process that is needed as far as getting the necessary papers from the state to approve the burial as the Bosnians perform that.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Does anyone want to second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we do table this item. Is there any discussion? I would like to make a comment. I did go online, I wanted to find out more information, because that's what I do. I read everything that comes through, as many of us do, try to get more information. I could not find anything. There was no website, no communication, nothing. And I, I was surprised that we didn't have representative, because I think for something that's important, and I mix. I was thinking either deny, or if we table it, maybe that would be the kind gesture, because I think for something that's important, I guess I was surprised that somebody was not here to represent, so.
I have some very good Bosnian friends, and Noel, if you'll let me know when it's, when they apply again, so that I know that it's going to be on the agenda, then I will make arrangements to have someone come that can speak at least to what the procedures are, and, and may, can help all of us understand the process a little bit better.
This is Thor's Spirit. I don't know if we're, we're out of our boundaries. This is a special permit for a cemetery. And understanding their religious customs, I think, is under the purview of the state, because they will issue that permit. So the major things, I think, we have to be concerned about is where is the property line? Who owns what piece of property? What is the access going to be? The real critical things that, that we're all about here. And yes, it's nice to understand the culture, but I don't believe that's our responsibility.
And that wasn't what I was thinking about. But I think that there were issues that were brought up about access. There were issues brought up about who owns the road, and where does it start, and where does it stop? All of those kinds of things need to be clarified before we can make a decision on our part. So, I wasn't talking so much about being able to come and speak to their traditions as much as what, what is the Bosnian population, the Bosnian cultural foundation, whoever it is that's representing this group? What is their plan for what they want this to look like? And how are they going to get there? Because I don't think it's been very well articulated to us so far.
And I, yeah, okay.
And is it Staff's responsibility to figure out the borders of the, of the property, and the access, and all of that, to get that, those deeds understood?
I would say no. Generally, property line disputes, if it is a dispute, are private, you know, private matters between two property owners.
And only recently brought it up, is that we've had an issue with the hobby farm, cultural. And sometimes, when you come to our country, they, one of them, we did approve the hobby farm, but there is not a clear understanding how we did things here in our city and our state. And so, they, they were figuring that we could just do this, and, and we had to kind of clarify, and we did get that through. So I think it's important, especially because you're considering burial customs, that if we want to do this, to be respectful to them, to understand that, if, what are your intentions? Will you abide by our state laws? Or do you want it traditional, traditional? Because sometimes, we can't always accommodate something. In fairness, it is an important thing, and we can do it respectfully. And that's all I meant by that, is that if we're going to look at this, we want to know if, so that they're clear in their understanding. Because we have had misunderstandings and miscommunication, where they were not always aware of everything that entails all the way through, so.
Well, I think that we have some good historical information that we can access. The Bosnians have traditionally, since they first came to this area in 1996, used the county burial plot this out on Osage Road. And so, obviously, the county has looked into what kinds of special permits, or what has to be in place in order for this to happen. So, it's not like we're reinventing a wheel. We just need to make sure we have everything in place.
I just want to make a quick clarification, because on Osage Road, there is a county cemetery, and there is a Muslim cemetery that is not affiliated with the county cemetery at all. And when you refer to Bosnians, I think this is a Bosnian Muslim group. I don't know how much, if there's non-Muslim Bosnians-
There are.
And where they bury. But I'm pretty sure the Bosnian Muslims are not being buried in the county cemetery on Osage Road. It would probably be the Muslim cemetery on Osage Road.
I didn't realize that they had actually bought part of that cemetery for their own use, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is on the table, that we approve to table this, and it's been seconded. Okay, let's go ahead and put an up and down vote, and go from there. All those in favor of tabling this discussion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, the time is 6:55. Our next item on the agenda is a request by Sue Wilson and Kevin Wright for a special permit to allow for a hobby farm located in the M1 Light Industrial District, located at 3031 East Shallows Road. And Staff report.
This is Miller with Staff. The applicant is requesting a special permit for a hobby farm that would allow for them to keep up to 24 chickens on a lot 4.7 acres in size. It would appear that the request would not have a negative impact on the area. The chickens would be located in the center of the lot and away from property lines. The lot in question is approximately 4.7 acres in size, which would allow for sufficient space to locate chickens away from adjacent property lines. The site in question is owned M1 Light Industrial District, and has been since the adoption of the ordinance in 1969. The property in question is located primarily in the 100-year flood plain. And the future land use map design makes this area as industrial. The proposed hobby farm would appear to fit characteristics of agricultural use and not be in conformance with the future land use map. However, the special permit for a hobby farm would appear to match the current use of surrounding properties. The applicants have indicated the chickens would be housed in an eight-by-eight chicken coop just northeast of the home in the rear yard. A 12-foot by 16-foot- A twelve foot by sixteen foot outdoor pen would be constructed next to the coop to allow for an outdoor area for the chickens. The applicants have noted that the pen will not be adjacent to property lines. Therefore, staff recommends that they request for a special permit to allow for, to allow a hobby farm with twenty-four chickens located at East Shalas Road would be approved for a follow, or should be approved for the following reasons. Um, the proposed hobby farm would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area as most of the land adjacent to the property is in crop production. The applicant has indicated that the chickens would be housed in a chicken coop and the outdoor space will not be adjacent to property lines, subject to the following conditions. The hobby farm will be limited to twenty-four hens, and the chickens will be contained within a fenced-in area and chicken coop not adjacent to property lines.
Thank you. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking in the microphones.
I'm Sue Wilson, thirty-three one East Shalas Road. We want to have the chickens for, this is a blue zone area. I'm a blue zone member, and I have been since before I moved back to Waterloo from Cedar Falls. We want to be, we have the eggs for better health, uh, not only for ourselves, but for the community. We do have some chickens at the moment, we need this permit so that we can keep them and not end up with them in our freezer. Quite frankly, we have people that come from Des Moines for our eggs, because they know the health benefits of knowing where the food comes from. We want to be able to continue this.
Yeah, one moment, she can't even have sort of rotten eggs, and all she can eat is our eggs.
She has a compromised immune system from GMOs and everything else that goes on, and she is able to get protein through our eggs.
And this is also going on, I heard each farm you must say, in Manuel Shalas.
It's the original Shalas property that was established back in the eighteen hundreds.
Farm used to be four hundred and eighty acres.
We, we'd like to be able to continue with our chickens.
And the barn's still there and everything, I mean.
They're, they're well taken care of, they are fed well, they are housed well, they have good to run, they enjoy the yard, and the neighbors think they're about the best thing to sit out on the porch in the evening and just watch. They're food.
Well, I've had pictures of them taking meat, because they all eat everywhere.
We walk them off the yard, we have a little herd of chickens by our feet. We want to be able to keep our chickens.
Still, we had you, and you got a, she used to stay in the yard, I'll tell you that right now.
Well, we sure appreciate your patience and waiting to the end, I think we probably should have had you earlier, but, yeah. Thank you so much for sharing, appreciate it. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward? Okay, if not, um, we'll go ahead and close the speaking part, and we'll turn back to the commission.
I move that we approve, um, a special permit request by Sue Wilson and Kevin Wright for a hobby farm located in the M-one Light Industrial District located at three zero three one East Shalas Road.
Second.
Okay, it's been, uh, moved and seconded that we approve the hobby farm for Wilson, Wilson's out on Shalas Road. Is there any further discussion?
I have questions for staff. The applicant is not the landlord, obviously someone signed it, but is the landlord?
Yes, it's, uh, Skip McKinsley, and he did sign the application.
Yeah, Bernard Skip McKinsley, um, Junior, did sign the application as the property owner saying he, well, he owns our eggs too, so.
Well, he signed it out anyway.
All right, no more questions.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor to have Wilsons have their hobby farms, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the time now is seven oh-two. The next item on the agenda is a request by Robin Hood Enterprises LLC for the eleven lot preliminary plat of Nottingham Third Edition, Zoned R-one, one and two family residence district. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The request for a preliminary plat of Nottingham Third Edition would create eleven lots on twenty-five point nine seven-two acres for residential development. There will not be a negative impact, um, on vehicular and pedestrian traffic in the area. Access to the lots would be gained from an extension of the current Crusade Drive. And the applicant is proposing to change the name from Crusade Drive to Shelley Court for approval, um, from the city engineering permit. The site is Zoned R-one, one and two resident, family residence district since, um, September fifteenth, two thousand and four, when it was rezoned from A-one agricultural district. The plat shows a stormwater detention area within one hundred, within the one hundred year flood plain that is located just west of the proposed buildable lots. The, a majority of the western portion of the property is located within the one hundred year flood plain as indicated by federal insurance administrator, administered administrations flood insurance rate maps. Um, the applicant is proposing that the area located within the flood plain be designated as a stormwater detention area, and the applicant is proposing of two plat, buildable lots in the easterly portion of the twenty-five point nine acres with only the rear portions of lots four through nine being located with, in the one hundred and five hundred year flood plain. The location where the dwellings would be located is not within the special flood hazard area. The preliminary plat shows eleven lots being platted for residential development. The plat shows Track A as an extension of present day Crusade Drive and will later be dedicated to the city as right-of-way. The plat also shows Track B, um, that is designated for future development, and Track C that is designated for stormwater detention and floodway purposes. The plat is compiled of twenty-five point nine seven-two acres and contains Prescott Creek. Access to Track B is shown between lots nine and ten, but has not been labeled as a street at this time and could serve as a potential street in the future. The area has been developed within the last five to ten years, with residents being constructed, um, to the northeast within Nottingham additions. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the preliminary plat of Nottingham Third Edition be approved for the following reasons. The plat in accordance with the subdivision ordinance with minor exceptions that do not appear negatively affect the intent of the subdivision ordinance, and the plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map which classify this area as mixed residential.
Thank you. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking with microphones.
I'm George DeFlure, and I live at forty-six sixteen William Drive, which is lot number eight in August, second property to be developed is directly to the south and slightly to the, I guess, well, that'd be the east of us. I think to get a better understanding of what precisely is being proposed, you need a better understanding than what is reflected in that, uh, one-dimensional map. If you go up William Drive to at the end, which would be to the north somewhat, there's a very great, steep elevation down toward where I live. And then if you go from Fourth Street along William Drive to where I live, it's a slight elevation to where I live. And then if you go directly up Lexley Drive, there's a very steep elevation, which I estimate to be roughly about thirty degrees or so down to where I live. And then property that's being developed has a slope that goes down to Prescott Creek. I give you that by way of topography to understand precisely what my position is and what I believe the position of a number of my neighbors is. First, you have to understand not just the topography, but what lies underneath the land. I watched any number of homes be developed out there. When we moved, we took possession of our property in April of two thousand and eight, and since April of two thousand and eight, there had been something like ten homes constructed. I believe there's only one empty lot out there right now. And so I've watched a lot of construction go on in that neighborhood. It's my knowledge that there are about three to four inches of black dirt on any lot out there, and then underneath three to four inches of black dirt, you have exceedingly heavy, hardback, almost impermeable clay soil. Water does not drain very well out there. One of the proposals, or the proposal calls for the installation of retention pond. If you could put that up again, I'd appreciate that. The retention pond, by my estimation, is going to be something along the lines of four hundred to five hundred feet, and then it's going to be probably oh fifty to sixty to seventy feet wide. And what you're going to have is water that stands forever. If you go to the very end of where Crusade Drive now ends, which is roughly about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty feet off of William Drive, there's a spring or creek or something, because there's water there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. There's a natural spring or something, and the kids in the neighborhood have taken to playing in that water, which is fine, I have no complaint about that, that's what kids do. I mention that only to tell you that when you build or permit the building of this retention pond, what you're going to get is basically nothing more than an invitation to harm to the neighborhood kids and to the property values of everyone who lives in that neighborhood. And worse yet, it's going to inflict untold financial harm among the people who have been supporting buying any of these lots in August and three. Robin Hood Enterprises, uh, offered the maintenance of this retention pond to the city of Waterloo. And the city of Waterloo wisely chose not to take on that responsibility. They chose to dump that retention pond onto you simply because they do not want the expense or the potential liability that will come with that retention pond. And it will be a great deal of possible liability that I will attempt to address very shortly. Someone raised an issue earlier about whether the man who wanted to develop that junkyard, whose corporation is now in semi-dissolved state, has the legal authority to take the action that he is taking. He has the, uh, in my opinion, he has a legal right to take the action as an individual. But once that corporation is either dissolved or not renewed or rechartered by the state of Iowa, that corporation has no legal authority to act or be sued or sue anyone because it is a nonentity. It simply does not exist. In this instance, I have no doubt that when Robin Hood Enterprises sells the last of those lots, Robin Hood Enterprises is going to dissolve, the assets of the corporation will go away, and anyone who is harmed by that retention pond or is harmed by virtue of buying any of those eleven lots that will have been sold to them will be up the creek financially speaking. This lot, or this, this retention pond, is going to be a huge, unsightly, muddy mess. There will be weeds, there will be mice, there'll be rats, there'll be snakes. And when you have something like that, it naturally attracts people who want to dump old tires, washing machines, whatever they don't want to pay today out to the dump. They will see that retention pond, and they will over time simply take their equipment out there and dump it. And that will cause untold harm to those of us who live in this neighborhood. Worse yet, you spend, the city of Waterloo spends tens of thousands spraying chemicals on their land to control weeds and, uh, other grasses that they don't want. It will be a festering pool for mosquitoes to be developed. And as I said, you spend tens of thousands of dollars each year spraying for mosquitoes, and yet this retention pond will be nothing more than a breeding ground for mosquitoes. You're going to expose the population out there, and indeed the population of the entire city of Waterloo to possible West Nile fever, encephalitis, and heartworm. Dogs get heartworms from mosquitoes, so do cats, so do horses. Mr. Lucas, who lives on Fourth Street, and I don't know that you can see it on that particular map, has some very expensive, rare animals, dracked horses. He will be put to the task of calling in veterinarians on a more regular basis to vaccinate his horses against heartworm, or he stands a potential of losing one of those very beautiful, very expensive animals because of this nightmarish retention pond that, uh, Robin Hood Enterprises wants to place there. More important than the possible losses, losses of dogs, cats, horses, think of what you're exposing the kids who live in this neighborhood to. When we moved there in April of two thousand and eight, there were very, very few kids in the neighborhood. But as homes have been developed, more and more young kids are moved into the neighborhood. I told you a short while ago about the natural spring or whatever it is at the end of Crusade Drive. We had three neighborhood girls, very young, very active, nice kids, nine or ten years of age, the Harrison girls and Gus's daughter who lives two houses up from us, who are constantly out there over the summers doing construction in the water that is naturally there at the end of Crusade Drive. It's a natural attraction for young kids to do this. And just as that small natural spring attracts those kids, this retention pond will attract other kids. And there are more and more kids who live in this neighborhood each year that passes. Those kids are going to go out there, because water is a natural attraction for kids. They love to play in water. And what they're going to be playing in when they go to this retention pond is a veritable toxic cesspool of chemicals that will endanger their health. They will be exposed to mosquitoes, they'll be exposed to rats, they'll be exposed to mice, they'll be exposed to all sorts of chemicals that will leach into that retention pond. And again, that retention pond will not drain within twenty-four hours. Worse yet, we have that open space now where geese have started to aggregate, for whatever reason. We have a number of people here tonight who can speak to this. Over the years, we've had this as decentralized. We've got sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred geese that are there just about every day, sometimes two or three times a day, flying in, flying out. I don't know if you've ever had the experience of being around geese, but for such a small animal, they produce an immaculate and great number of droppings. How one animal can produce so many droppings in around the twenty-four hour time period, I don't know. But the geese will, as geese are wanted to, land on that lake, and it will be nothing more than a cesspool for geese droppings. And again, these kids are going to be playing in that toxic soup, and will come away harmed by having been exposed to the chemicals, the mice, the rats, the snakes, the mosquitoes, and what have you. The drainage, the buildup of this land is going to have to occur. Uh, if you look at Crusade Drive where it now ends, where it does that roundabout turn, move it, move the cursor over here, about, uh, three or four inches further, there is a manhole that was placed there when Norm Hayek who owned this land a while back with the idea toward future plating and sale of lots placed there. That manhole jumps up some three and a half to four feet. The street is going to run through that manhole, which means that you're going to have to build that land up by some three and a half to four feet. That means that they're going to have to put in an incredible number of truckloads of fill. And when they put in that fill, the already bad topography of that land will be drastically changed. Everyone who lives there will be affected by the water runoff. The people who live at the top of William Drive, the Mattoons, Dr. Nissa's neighbor, uh, Gus and I am drawing a blank on this last name, the Rittmans, everyone will have that water running down across their land. And as I understand it, the plan is to build up the slope of the land right now, the manhole covers here, the slope of the land is like this. And when they fill that, that water is going to be thrown back, and it's going to be thrown back onto all of the landowners who now live along William Drive. From the Mattoons, to Dr. Nissa's neighbor, to Gus and his wife, to the Rittmans, and to us, also to our neighbors as well. We're going to have a veritable swimming pool in our backyard each and every time that there's a major rain. The existing homeowners are going to be greatly affected by it. But the people who are really going to be destroyed by this are the purchasers of these lots, especially four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. I looked at the map, and if you look at the map closely, you'll see that there are shifts into where the five hundred year and one hundred year flood plains are by the, the, the engineer. into where the 500-year and 100-year floodplains are by the engineer who drafted that. And the engineer tells you that the FEMA old lines are incorrect and his new lines are correct. Well, I've lived there for six and a half years, and I'm telling you, the engineer is as wrong as can be. We have experienced since April of 2008, nothing short of three, at least three, almost 500-year floods in this land. Three almost 500-year floods in the last six and a half years. That will put that water from Prescott Creek onto lots 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, not just onto the lots, but into their basements every time there's a major rainfall. The topography will not allow that water to drain, the water will back up even with this retention pond, which is why I really want to know the depth of the retention pond and where that retention pond is going to drain to. When Robinhood Enterprises sells the last of those 11 lots, they're going to dissolve their corporation. And that means one year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, whenever there's a substantial rain, those people will lose their life investments. For the average person, putting $300 or $40,000 into a home is their entire savings. You cannot have an individual subjected to their homes being destroyed simply because someone wants to develop this land that is unsuitable to being developed. Every one of those people will suffer, and every one of those people will have water damage to their homes. They'll have swing pools in their basements. And over time, the hydroponic pressure will cause water to seep through the side walls of those basements. We're going to have nothing but future problems if this development goes forward. The importance of telling you about the dissolution of the corporation, Robinhood Enterprises, is once they go away, the people who have the misfortune of buying those lots, and people like me and like the neighbors who are here tonight, will have no one to look to for revenge. We can't sue a corporation that no longer exists. And that means the only other person that we can look to for potential damages would be the city of Waterloo by virtue of this plot being approved. These people are going to lose their life savings. They can't sell that property if there's water damage to it. When you place your home for sale on the Chapter 558A of the code, you have to list all known defects, all known problems. And believe you me, water is a massive problem. And if you fail to disclose it, you're setting yourself up for a major lawsuit. These people are going to lose their life savings because their homes will be worthless, will be damaged, and from time to time, they will have to put money into it to maintain their homes. And 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now, whenever they decide to sell their homes, they'll have to disclose, we've got a major water problem here. And no person in his right mind who knows that will want to buy those homes. This is a nightmare. This is something that you should not approve because it's going to affect us. We are going to end up with lakes in our backyards, we're going to end up with rats, snakes, mice, mosquitoes, galore, and this will be swamp central in West Waterloo. Those people, though, will have the same problems that we will have, except that they'll be unable to sell their homes. Their homes will be essentially worthless. Please don't allow this to happen. Take a look at what this is all about. And if there's an answer to that retention pond depth and where it drains to, I would appreciate knowing. Is there an answer?
Pond depth information is not in here. By grades, it would drain to the west and the northwest. The applicant's engineer is here. He can probably address that better.
Where's the engineer?
Right here.
Where does it drain to?
A retention pond by definition drains to the, doesn't drink out of a surface outlet.
Have you considered the subsoil a hardback quake?
We haven't taken any.
Well, let me.
Yes, sir, if you can come to the front and identify yourself and address, thank you.
My name is Bill Clausen. I'm the Clausen engineer in Waterloo. I'm not sure where to begin with all this because so much of it is wrong from what the judge said. The, so, what was your question?
I want to know where it drains to. And if you don't know the subsurface, will it drain at all?
We have not taken soil borers. When Norm Hyatt built the sanitary sewer in that area, he had a contractor walk a hole down to this, at that point, it was going to be a lake. And we had him dig some holes there, just some test holes, to see if it would hold water. And it wouldn't hold water. They dug down 6, 7 feet, and it wouldn't hold water. A retention, we're saying this is a retention, detention area. The city had a requirement for one or the other. A retention area, the water would soak away. A detention area, it would have a surface outlet, so it would go to the creek. The plan here is to take some of the extricated materials there, use that to build up the streets. But in no way is this street going to be built up to such an extent that the water will flow to the west like as you portrayed. It's, it would be silly. I mean, there's at least 10, 15 feet of elevation difference between that street and the, and Shelley, Shelley Court. It just isn't going to happen. As far as the FEMA flood map, so a perm map has, it's a graphical depiction of where the stream is, where the streets are, where the 100-year floodplain is, where the floodway is, where the 500-year floodplain is. It also shows what the elevations are, that what the 100-year flood elevation is supposed to be at that location. So we took the elevations from the flood map and compared that with the contour mapping that exists on the existing ground. And that's what told us that the map is incorrect. If you follow where the, where the contour lines are with respect to the flood, the 100-year floodplain elevation, or the floodplain location, then of course not. The floodplain is much closer to the creek, and that's true.
I have a question, and pardon my ignorance, when I'm looking at that plat, is that the river, is that just showing where it would flood if it floods? Or I'm just?
The blue is showing the 100-year floodplain.
Okay, so that's all solid ground until it becomes flooded? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well.
No.
Okay, I guess where I'm a little lost, it looks like we're building the river, and that would not make sense. So just if you could help my understanding, I'm trying to figure out where, where we would look at solid ground under the theoretical 100-year flood.
You might draw graphics here, it'd be real nice if you had some means for the, for us to interact with you with a pointer or something, but we can't. But if you look, there's a mass of trees in there, and then there's a fine line next to that. If you're on this side, I could point to it, but there is a correction there, Prescott Street.
So to the left of the line, okay.
You can see it a little bit at the top there.
Okay. So everything in that plat is, according to FEMA, that would be dry except for that 100-year potential.
This is Prescott Street where the trees are. The trees are on both sides of Prescott Creek. The blue signifies the 100-year floodplain that they're showing you there. And then the gray is the 500-year floodplain.
I guess in response to what the gentleman mentioned about the manhole and the drainage, what is the plan for drainage? Because we've heard so many stories.
That's a sanitary sewer, and that's what Mr. Hyde built. And it does sit out of the ground three, four years of feet. And the intent of that is to bring the road up to that elevation. But it's still far, far lower than any of these other streets. And there's no way in the world it's going to back water up into those streets, those houses. It's not possible, it's not physically possible.
Oh, let me, I don't want to get into an argument or make it personal with Mr. Clausen. He knows more about engineering than if I studied for the next 10 years I will ever know. But there is one thing I know, is that I can see. And everybody else here can see, and they know where that water goes. And I'm telling you, your engineering skill aside, you are dead wrong on where you say that water goes.
When you put the, when you reach that manhole, that it backs it through up to the top of the hill?
You don't go through to the top of the hill, Bill, but it will impact us if we're on the, on the south side.
You're not out there, you're not out there, you see it.
I don't agree, but, Bill. I'd be willing to sit down with you and see what you're talking about.
Well, I'm totally, I don't know if this is accurate or not. We just had a brief discussion there. There are people here who have photos of the water that has backed up in the last six years or so. And again, I will defer to Mr. Clausen's expertise when it comes to engineering. But I know from having lived there that that water comes up dangerously close to our homes. And when he puts in that fill, that water is going to go somewhere. And I would question his status about that retention pond draining very quickly within 24 hours.
I didn't give you the, I don't know where the 24 hours came from.
Well, in 24 hours.
Gentlemen, I really appreciate, I appreciate both of your input. And is there anything else either of you would like to add for closing remarks? And we'll go ahead and we'll put it to a vote.
Well, there are.
Okay, okay, is there someone, is there other people? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, was someone alive else to come forward? My apologies.
My name is Pamela Wolf. I live at 4810 West 4th Street. I have the same concerns as Judge Stigler. He's one of my neighbors back a couple houses. We moved in and built our home in '09. Since I've been there in '09, and we do have pictures at home that we can provide, we have had three times that the water has backed up to the back of our lots, just with heavy rains. Standing there today, with just the rain we've had in the last few days, you can just see it's a bog. And before you vote, I think you guys should go out and look at it. It's just very obvious this is a water area. It is not going to, I don't get water in my basement, but I'm up on 4th, and I'm up on the top. But the land all flows down, and when they come in and put that dirt in, it's got nowhere to go. So that's one of my biggest concerns is the water. Secondly, I have a concern, and I don't know if it's addressed separately, but it notes about replating Lot 2, which is going to be Lot 11. It was on the information that we got from you guys.
So it looks like the back triangular portion of Lot 2?
Correct.
Is included in what will become Lot 11?
The original Lot 2 is my lot. If you read the existing deed from when we purchased that lot, which was first edition, it says, "No lot may be split to increase the number of lots in the subdivision." When we purchased that lot from Norm, he took some of the footage from ours so that he could put a roadway into another house later. And he guaranteed us that per the deed, which it's in the deeds, that there will be no homes behind us because they can't put another home on that lot. It could just be sold to another neighbor or whatever, per the deed. So my question is, the reason why they want to replat that is so they can put a home there now. When that lot was split, per the deed, it says, "No home can go on that land." And so I want to know, is that a separate issue from this or not? Or is that all part of the approval? And what is the legality of that?
I would say it's not a separate issue. It's related as part of a replat if, if the portion of Lot 2 of the former addition is replatted into this plat, it will conform to the deed of dedication approved as part of this plat and would not be subject to the deed of dedication of the former plat. I would note, this is just a preliminary plat. They have submitted a preliminary deed of dedication. A final deed of dedication would have to be submitted along with the final plat. And we do have some concerns on the deed of dedication, such as whether or not it addresses the long-term maintenance of any tracks, such as where the detention pond is going to be located. We also reviewed deed of dedications for consistency with adjoining subdivisions and the deed of dedication that it has as to the being a buildable lot. I mean, I don't know, the applicant might be able to address that additionally. I would guess that where the dwelling on the proposed Lot 11 would be located, it would not be located on the portion that was a part of the original Lot 2.
Correct, but my question's more the legality, that when the lot was split, the deed that was split under said, "No home could go on that lot." So how can that be changed later? I mean, that would be my question legally. Can you change that later just by simply replating it into a new subdivision?
That might be something that the attorneys would have to review.
Yeah, so that would be a question that I would have. The other thing, I don't really mind that homes would go back there. I think it's great. We've already extended our neighborhood greatly. But I think that we see so much flooding in this area, we get so much rain. I'm with Judge Stigler. I would hate to see people come in, build homes, and they are going to get water in their basements. It's just a fact. And like I said, I think you guys should go out and take a look at it. You just see how low laying that ground really is. And thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Does anyone in the audience have any photographs of the, of the rain?
Not on me.
You do have some? Can we see them?
Guess I'm up next. By default.
Thank you, sir. If you can state your name and address.
My name is Gary Leterick. I live at 4828 West 4th Street. Nottingham, in the bottom right-hand corner, Nottingham First Edition, Lot Number 4. Bottom right-hand corner of what you're seeing there. My wife, Mary, and I are the very first residents in Nottingham Edition. We moved in in July of 2004, and we've watched everything happen, and we've taken photos over the years. In addition to that, is I'm a 35-year professional engineer. So I will be commenting a little bit on some of these things to help clarify that situation. One of the, one of the things that I'd like to bring up is the detention pond. I think that language, if, if you go forward with this, and I'm a little disappointed in your recommendation move forward as is because I think there's a lot of misinformation that has not come to the surface. And I do believe the corporation who owns this is there to make money and may not have the best of our interests at heart overall. So language needs to be added to the homeowners association of the new addition that they're proposing in Track 2, that the people who buy those lots would be financially responsible for taking care of this pond. That is not anywhere I've found it. And I just want to be upfront with the people and let them know their financial responsibility. This does not apply to first edition or second edition, but simply this one. The second item is the neighbor property, which is purchased behind that, which is north of Track C. That would then be the way this is designed, an isolated piece of land. In the future, if the neighbors decide to sell, and whoever wants to buy that separate piece of property, there would be no access to that property. It would be totally isolated. So I would propose that you have to allow a right-of-way for the future on the north side of the cul-de-sac to enter that property, which would then be taking away additional space from properties 3 and 4 that you see. Otherwise, how else is anybody going to access this property? Last of the Dirks property, the first edition, Lot 3. If you can scroll to that down a little bit. Lot 3 is buzzed up to Lot 10 that you see. And it is, in this area, Lot 10 is an often flooded drainage area. The reason behind this is Judge Stigler's Lot, Lot 8, Lot, and the one to the right of that, and then Lot 1 of 4th Street, 2, 3, and 4, all drained into Lot 10. So need to clearly define an easement for drainage for the five or six lots that are there draining into this area. And effectively, this is making Lot 10 a building site zone that I would most certainly never, ever want to tell anybody to build on that lot. Because if you did build that up, where's the drainage going to go? It has to go somewhere. A lot of this is about draining the brain. It has to go somewhere. A lot of this is about drainage, the rain, and things like that, and snow melt. So, uh, lot ten is a real problem, uh, for a future, future owner, in my opinion. Positioning, I'll take the position on maintaining the character of Nottingham. Okay? I don't believe the way this is laid out right now, it really maintains the position of what we're, what the neighborhood has been established in. There, there are large lots, there are nice homes built there, okay? Putting in these additional lots to develop more income by selling additional lots isn't in line with the character. Most, the minimum size right now is, I believe, somewhere around twenty-five thousand square feet for the existing lots. Uh, tract C proposes to be down to, I believe, about sixteen thousand square feet, uh, lot size. I'm not using, I'm using round numbers to make things simpler. Which is significantly smaller than the rest of the established Nottingham neighborhood by thirty-five percent. I don't think that it's our policy to do something like this, put small houses in with water lots and things like this. So therefore, it does not maintain the character of the neighborhood. Uh, I don't think you should allow any lot sizes to go below the current minimum in Nottingham, which is about twenty-five thousand square feet. And, uh, also need protection from the possibility of putting duplexes on these homes. That needs to be written into whatever happens here as well. And so the minimum square footage of the, of the homes also needs to be defined. And, uh, otherwise, it's going to be significant property depreciation. You know, the guys who own the property, they just want to sell it to get out of town, or whatever they do. Uh, but we live there, and we live there long-term, especially as the original resident. I love it. One of the things Judge Stigler did not mention is right across the street from us is the park. So any of the negative influences that some of the drainage issues or other things that he mentioned may have an effect on it. It's going to affect a lot of people who use that park every day. And you know there's Little League baseball there all the time, and there's picnics there all the time. And we love that fact, and we can hear all that stuff. So, uh, that's one area. I, I have studied the engineering drawings that Bill made, and I do believe that he is correct about lots one, two, and three. Uh, looking at the elevation, I went out there myself and walked it for a while, and this topography map, that there would be drainage properly away from, uh, the other lots, uh, the way it's designed right now, so it's built with. Now, there would be some drainage, it's relatively flat, but there would be sufficient drainage, in my opinion. Lots four, five, six, seven, and eight, nine. Uh, I gotta tell you, this is a flood zone. I understand the engineering methods that Bill used to develop and thinking the payment numbers were incorrect, but I live there. And there's no better evidence, you can have engineering calculations and you can have real-life test data. Okay, I'm always going to go with the real-life test data because that's what's actually happening. So, and, and this is no negative on you, Bill, in any way, shape, or form. It's just that we live there and we see what's happening. So what I have here, and I will pass this around a little bit. Now realize the picture was taken, uh, I know you can't see this very well, but the picture was taken from this point on my property, which is, uh, I have a walkout basement home, so it's elevated quite a bit above the property, and taken in this direction towards the proposed area. So what you see, and you can see off my deck here where I'm taking it, and I have drawn in as much perspective on property lines as I could reasonably estimate in this huge picture. This is lot three, my neighbor, and this is my lot, goes to that fence line, and this is lot ten. Now, this is just snow melt, okay? You can see, and, and it is very wet. Uh, you can see how much of the area of lot ten is completely covered by the water. Okay? Now, this is because of our lots draining onto it, and you have to allow drainage from the lots to go somewhere, correct? So where are you going to put a home? Here. Now, this is the road bed, it is partially built up, and then it falls off. And this little thing here is the sewer that sticks up about four feet. And to know where that's going, just to give you some references. This is tract B, and this is the road easement that is drawn in to that particular, uh, area. Here, it goes in this direction. You can see the road easement is right in the middle of the water. Now, we have a lot of other pictures that we could show you too, but I thought this one was a good illustration of what was happening. Um, if you had any questions about this, this is Highway sixty-three, Prescott Creek is in the trees. You can see how relatively flat this is from rolling off of this area. So this is the best evidence that I can provide to you that saying, and, and realizing that that's the sewer, and you see that that's a little bit lower. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, in my opinion, will always be major water problem areas with this layout. I had had a discussion with Norm Hayek about this at one time, and he said off the record to me that, uh, he realized that, but he was going to put a pond in, and he was hoping that was going to solve the problems. Well, you know, that was, uh, two thousand and seven or eight, or something. And it didn't work. Lots one, two, and three may be acceptable, in my opinion, but the rest of them, uh, I would never, ever recommend that anyone build in that area. So you can pass these around. If you had any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. I've tried to strike a balanced approach here to my comments and acknowledging that there is some good in this design, but unless you live there and take pictures, you're not going to see this, this in reality, just by the data that's shown.
Thank you.
What about the sewage line that's going to have?
Oh, I did forget lot point. Thank you. My wonderful wife is, is always making sure I do well. One of the things I'd like to mention is, uh, in tract B, need to protect future land and homeowners in this area as well, because this is part of the plot. As low as that is, that would require putting grinder pumps and lift pumps in your basement. Even on the top floor, it's so low. I'm asking that the city make it very plain in writing that the sanitary sewer that already exists, that you spent a lot of money on, across Prescott Creek, in the other addition, which I can't remember the name of because I just gave it to you, uh, that that be brought across the creek in use, and not having to subject those people to lift pumps and everything else. Because lifting it all the way up is going to be quite a little chore. In addition to that, uh, I talked about the FEMA floodplains. I think the FEMA floodplains are conservative based on living there for ten years and observing the amount of water. So I understand the engineering calculations, I'm going with the evidence of what's really happening. Uh, there has been, in my opinion, in the past ten years, uh, a multitude of floodings that are even worse than, than that picture that I brought today. They came up higher, further towards our property and things like that. And, you know, the neighbors get in the backyard, go look how high that is, oh my God. The new floodlines are not correct, and in fact, the FEMA lines are conservative at best. That picture was taken on the tenth of March, twenty thirteen, if so you're aware. The other thing I'm asking you to do as, as this area is that, you know, I hope that you're here to protect us. Protect the whole community. You're not here to make, to allow things to happen to developers. You're really here to protect us, and I'm asking you to take that on as a major thing you should do. And, uh, I would propose that, looking at tract B, that you not allow any housing ever to be placed in tract B. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Just to trade with staff, I'll just follow up a few comments. Tract B is a future development, so its future development would be subject to a future plat. I mean, we could talk about a condition restricting its development, but that's not going to be advisable. It should be dealt with when a future plat of that area comes through. Floodplain, um, we, we can sit here and deblate what should be in the hundred-year floodplain or not. The only thing I would add to that is, I don't think you can necessarily address flash flood events and at what height a flash flood event got to and compare that to a hundred-year flood. They're not the same thing. And regarding comments regarding some of the inadequacies of the deed of dedication, we agree, there are some inadequacies, there will need to be some changes. A deed of dedication is not actually required to be submitted as part of a preliminary plat. It's part of the final plat, it's just noted in the list of documentation required. Preliminary deed of dedication preferred but not required. So it's just something we ask if we can get a preliminary deed of dedication so we can start those reviews, start those comments of, you know, what issues will, will need to be addressed. So the primary review is on the layout and the grading, and there are some comments and concerns regarding that. But this is a piece of property that is residentially zoned, it can be developed. So this is a plat that looks at the technicality of how this land is to be developed. You know, addressing grading, drainage, runoff are definitely valid points of a plat, so that's definitely something that can be reviewed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, uh, Bill Clausen again, I'd just like to comment on a couple of things. We are very aware of tract B and the, and the elevation of the sewer, the sanitary sewer that would serve that, and will have to be served by a pump, um, a grinder pump for the basement, and that's very obvious. I don't, I don't foresee that as being a big problem, uh, but, uh, yes. Um, and it's the, uh, for, for access to tract B, there will have to be a culvert installed, um, in that, um, access, right access.
Bill, one of the questions they had or comments they had was serving it from the new sewer that goes through Prescotts. Could it be connected to that?
It could be, but it'd be very costly, evident, to one house. It would, uh, it would, it would make more sense to, to actually lower the sewer. But, uh, when Norm built this, his intent was to build, um, was to have, or say, elevate it like we have it. And so the sewer was, was constructed very shallow, and it could be made much deeper because there's plenty of fall further to the north. I don't think it's necessary.
I think it's a matter of trading out costs, is it the cost of development, like bringing the sewer class? Or is it going to be the cost of the homeowner to put it in each individual one, and the problems with?
Well, it's just one, just one grinder pump, and, and that, uh, that person wouldn't be aware of it when you bought the lot. That if I want to build here, I have to put a grinder pump in.
Right. I'm just saying, you're just, you're just moving the costs from the developer to the homeowner.
That grinder pump, I think you're talking about eighty-five grand. But, but that's, that's the decision of the person that, well, that's the decision of the person buying the lot.
Yeah. Can we call a question, please? And, okay. Thank you, sir. Your name and your address?
Steve Grum, forty-six forty-six William Drive, a little corner of William and West Fourth. I've got a grinder pump because of the water problems and the issues we've got there. And I'm at the top, and all our water goes down. And when I built my house in two thousand and four, we cut into a bunch of field tile. So all of that area that's up here where we're at is tiled, and it runs downhill. It runs into all these other lots. So what you're going to do is you're basically going to be cutting into more field tile. Uh, I dug out a ton of clay when we put our house in. Majority of my foundation's in clay. Our neighbors, the Wolves are the same way, Soul's are the same way, Judge Stigler's is the same way. It's a clay base up there, that's what we have. Then you've got your black dirt on top. What am I going to do about this? I think that houses are going to be developed here sometime, but I think you're going to have to make everybody aware of the issues that's going to face them. I've had to replace my grinder pump already, at least at one time, so far in ten years. They say they last anywhere from five to seven years. I got lucky and got nine years on the monitor. It's going to happen to everybody, it's out there, that you're going to be allowing them to build out here in this area. Especially if they don't do something different with the sewer system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Dave.
Oh, sorry.
Councilman Jones of Waterloo City Council, Ward one. So this is the area that I am responsible for, and as an advocate for the homeowners here, you know, there are issues, I think, with the character of that neighborhood and the lots being substantially smaller, I think is an issue. There are definitely water problems. I mean, I've seen it firsthand. There are drainage problems, water problems, and, and the like, and I don't think that has been completely resolved. To Eric's point, it is zoned residential, but there are a lot of areas in the city that have been zoned residential that we've built on that have major water problems. And I don't want this to be one of them. I don't want to move forward in a quick fashion and create just another disaster like we have in various parts of the city. I don't think this needs to be rushed through, I think it needs to be looked at, I think we need to consider the lot size. I mean, we, we need to consider any kind of retention or detention pond, and what that is, and what that looks like, or standing water, and all the issues that come with that. I mean, there's just too many issues, in my mind, to move this thing forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Hi.
I'm Phyllis Delarosa, I live at four, five, five, eight William Drive, and I believe I am lot three. My lot fronts three and two in the new proposed area, that's where I live. I'm two houses away from Judge Stigler. And, you know, I won't reiterate what so many people have already said, but I am here to tell you, I'm not an engineer, but like Judge Stigler said, I can see. And you may be an engineer, you don't live in my house. And I can look out my back window, and I've lived here, I've lived in Waterloo for fourteen months. I, I moved here from Washington DC. And we go out here because this is a beautiful enclave, it's peaceful, it's gorgeous, it's nice. And, but I look out my back window when it rains, and I see the water creeping up and creeping up and creeping up. We put a battery backup on our sun pump because we know it's not wet in our basement, it's going to, you know, it was going to flood, it's probably a matter of when. The retention pond is a huge concern. I'm the mother of one of the little girls that Judge Stigler mentioned plays out there. I don't want that to be a hazard to her, I don't want it to be a hazard to the other people that have moved in. We have people with, I mean, little kids, like little tiny, little girl that runs around. You know, we don't need that hazard here. Who's liable if someone were to drown in that? Who's liable if someone were to get hurt? To the judge's point, the developer will dissolve the corporation, they'll go, go forever. And who's left holding the bag? The homeowners, the city? You know, I mean, ultimately, there has to be a little bit more of a plan. This will really have a really strong negative impact on our property values because even, even if the best-case scenario plays out, and only the homes on the new section are wet, our homes will be guilty by association. And it'll be, oh, you have one of the houses in a wet neighborhood, you have one of the houses in the neighborhood where the basement's flooded. Even my, my back patio, I'm in a brick paver patio. You could go walk on it this evening because we had some rain, it's going to go swish, swish, swish for about the next two days. Our, the, the guy that, our lawn service, he told me several weeks ago, he's like, you know, you just need to shut off your irrigation because your, your, your yard is a bog. There's, there's no way we can know, it's just too wet. So this is a very wet area, um, it's, it's really, I mean, I would be so worried for anybody, especially in the back road that bought those homes. I mean, to your judge's point, they're going to lose everything. I mean, you can barely sell a house now anyway. We had a house on our street that was eventually just taken off the market because, you know, at, at that point, a lot of people would say, well, for that, I'll just buy a lot and build a house. It would just completely destroy our property values, which, to be honest with you, are, are flat. And I know that for a fact because I just had the house reassessed, so, uh, thank you very much.
No, thank you. Sir, anyone else from the audience? We certainly appreciate your patience and all of your comments and information. And if there's no more comments from the audience, I'd like to turn it back to commission. I would like to make one comment. I know we have sat here for three months with Summerland, and what keeps going through my mind is I don't want to see another Summerland. Uh, and with all due respect, I think everything was, um, very well articulated, very well presented.
And with all due respect, I think everything was very well articulated, very well presented. I am one, too, that I want to see hands-on, because the best-laid plans can be laid, but facts are facts, and I know we have sat here through very long sessions dealing with flooding problems and flooding issues, and if we have an opportunity, like we had mentioned in the past, to prevent something like this from happening again, I feel like in good conscience, I would want everything I can, because just because, this is a saying that we grew up in our family, just as you can, doesn't mean you should. Just, I feel like it's common sense, and maybe, maybe we need to take a closer look. Now, I'm doing this, and I know about Robert's Rule, so I cannot make a motion if I understand that correctly, because I am moderating the meeting, so I leave it to the rest of you to decide what kind of motion you'd like to make.
I do have a quick question for staff. What procedurally moving forward is the difference if we deny, or if we table, councilman suggests that we delay? So, what's the?
Obviously, it depends on what the developer would want to do, the applicant would want to do then. If you denied it or tabled it, they may want to come back to PNC, obviously, if it's tabled, they have to. If it's denied, they could come back to PNC and try to address, and either the neighbors try to address some of the issues, try to get more technical data. Moving ahead to council, if it was denied, it does not take in kind of a different vote at council, supermajority or anything like that is not required. So, from that standpoint, it would not make a difference, it would still be up to the council.
Mrs. Thornsberry, I have a concern. I'm with you, Lynn, with the Summerland thing, and with all that I have been involved with, with non-point and point sources of water pollution, and it just chilled me to hear that children are playing in water that are coming out of agricultural tiles. Please don't let those kids do that. That tile, that water has so many chemicals in it, that it's just not healthy to be playing in it. And if you just, if you just look at the grade of this, of the map, and the lines and all, it's like, this doesn't make any sense to, to continue to build because we can. And I think it's time that we begin to take the water events that are happening, the rain events, the weather events that are happening more and more frequently to heart, and say, this doesn't make sense in the environment that we're living in today. Those are my comments.
This is Morrison. I noticed that the application's not signed. Is that normal? Page 95.
This is Trade With Staff. Unfortunately, that is actually kind of normal with plats. The applicant's engineer is the one that's doing all of the legwork, and we ask that they get the owner's signature prior, before we send it to the city council, but we usually aren't too picky about making sure we have that before it comes to the planning and zoning commission.
I'd like to make a motion.
I was going to make a motion.
Do, go.
I was actually going to make a motion.
I'm writing in pen, so.
Yeah. To table the decision that allows the developer to address citizens' concerns, and then come back to planning and zoning with a reform plan in some way, make a motion and table.
Okay, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table this discussion until things can be developed and come back at another time. Is there any, any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor to table this request with 11 lot plat, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you all for coming. We do have a couple other quick little items, but I know many of you have been so patient, and we appreciate that. So, apologize for cutting you off earlier, you are always welcome, and thank you again for, for sticking through it, and we will quickly go through the rest of our meeting. Okay, the next item on agenda, it is 803. There's been a request by the city of Waterloo to name two new private streets as Cohen Lane and Keith Lane. Staffing report.
There's a request by the city to name two new private streets as Cohen and Keith Lane. These streets will be served, serve the new residential development consisting of five twin homes. This is one of those developments on Summerland, off of Summerland Drive, on Daisier Road, that was recently on the agenda. So, staff is recommending approval of the street naming, as the engineering department has reviewed the street names and is recommending approval.
Okay, for those of you who wish to speak for against this request, would we ask that you please come to the microphone and identify yourself by name and address? The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking to the microphones. Is there anyone from the audience? Okay, I'm going to turn this back to the commission. Any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion on the table?
I'd like to move that we approve the names of each two streets as requested by staff.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the two namings of the street. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the final item on our agenda this evening is the fiscal year 2015-2019 capital improvements program. Staff report on that? Do we have one? Thank you.
Yes, this is Grandma Staff. You'll see I placed the book in front of you there, and then I attached the memo in the packet, basically just outlining what's in the book. Like I said, it's a five-year capital improvements programming. There are a total of 202 projects listed in it. In this current fiscal year, we bonded $12 million, $8 million through general obligation bonds, $4 million in sewer revenue bonds, and then it just lists the five-year outlook as a whole. Staff reviews this on a yearly basis, that's why you see it look every year, because we change, look at it every year to update the projects yearly.
Okay. Can I have a motion to have this capital improvements plan placed on file?
So.
Seconded?
No. No.
It's been moved and seconded that we place a capital improvements program for fiscal years 2015-2019 on file. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Any discussion items?
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is closed.